Exactly, exactly.
Good evening, everyone, and I'll take this opportunity to call this, uh, meeting of Ashboro City Council from May 8th, 2025 to order. Uh, as we begin, I would like to ask that we all, uh, stand for a moment, please, and join, join me in silent prayer, and, uh, ask that you keep our Mayor David Smith, our beloved Mayor, in your prayers, and I'll explain just a little bit more in a moment, but thank you. Thank you, everyone. If you may, if you will, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening for their items of interest. Uh, a couple of things I will, as I said, the, uh, Mayor David Smith is a little under the weather this evening and was, uh, felt it best, uh, uh, stay in and rest up for the day, and we trust he'll, uh, be back, back on his feet and going good in a short period of time. We thank y'all for your consideration there, and, uh, and also, in the, in the manager's office, I will take note of, uh, uh, our, our beloved and longtime, uh, administrative person that actually really runs the city, Joe Cockman. Uh, today is her birthday, so, uh, keep her. She's downstairs listening. She's the unseen hero that run, that keeps all this running. Um, at this time, I'll open the floor for a public comment period. If there's anyone that would like to address the council of any matter that concerns them, city business, uh, please note that if you are here for an item that is on the agenda, there will be open time for any commentary related to specific agenda items, or if you have any general item you'd like to share or comment with us, now would be the time. Please come forward. And if you would please, sir, as you introduce yourself, if you would print your name, uh, in the book there so that the recording secretary can have it correct.
My name is Michael Robbins. And I live on Crestview Church Road, or just off of Crestview Church Road. And I'm wondering how many people live in that area, south of Ashboro? If there's anybody here, uh, did you know what kind of traffic problems we have?
I've lived there forty-one years, yes, sir.
We have, uh, the zoo still has a lot of traffic, which comes out of Greensboro down and doesn't get on the zoo connector. We also have, uh, uh, these apartments have just been built on the corner of Crestview and the, uh, uh, the Zoo Parkway. And we also have a zoo complex, um, over there for the, all the athletic stuff, the, uh, uh, they have the volleyball tournaments, and there's hundreds of cars that show up for those tournaments. I mean, I'm, I'm glad we have it. And, uh, we still have the, uh, uh, Yogi Bear Campground there close by, next to this property. And, uh, I, I'm concerned about all the traffic that's gonna be, uh, caused by the addition of more, uh, apartments and houses in this area. And it was my understanding when the zoo was built, that they wanted to keep everything kind of, you know, ruled, and not let people, um, you know, build up a lot of stuff that would take away from the zoo. So anyway, uh, I just wanted to come up and kind of express my concerns about the traffic situation. You also have Crossroads, uh, Retirement Center, and then there's another one there, I can't think of the name of it.
Terrible.
Just before we get to the, uh, zoo complex, uh, with the sports. But, uh, there's a lot of traffic in that area, and a lot of subdivisions that live around down in that area already. And it's getting harder and harder to get, get out on the highway over there, so I just kind of wanted to come up and just kind of say, uh, I hope you'll consider this, uh, traffic situation that we have down there right now, and how it's gonna affect the people who live in that area. And, uh, so that's about all I have to say about it.
Mr. Robbins, I, I thank you very much for your insight and your comments, as I, I too live, live, uh, very, very close by there, and, uh, the, the bypass has helped quite a bit with the zoo traffic on the holidays and all backing way up Zoo Parkway. Uh, the case that I'm sure you're, uh, referring to of, uh, the Brazile property and what type of development may go next to the campground has been continued to June. Uh, our understanding from the developer, no warranty comes with this statement, but they are looking at an entirely different plan at this point. Uh, I bet it, it will include some numbers of people, I would say. Um, in addition to add to the list, the city's building a fire station right there at the intersection.
That is true.
And that will add to that, and, uh, the silver lining I hope to share with you, uh, of, of, is for the, we're working with the, uh, the North Carolina DOT, and the rest, the Engineers Office in Aberdeen, and with the General Assembly for improvements and improvement project funding. It, and it, believe it, it has to get worse before it gets better, and it, it has now made it to worse, and there are roadway improvements that they are working on as we speak to handle that traffic. Um, that doesn't take the cars away, but it may make them flow considerably better, we certainly hope.
Okay.
But I think your comments are very accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on, uh, any matter not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move forward with the agenda, and we'll resume our meeting with the old business, and the resumption of our legislative hearings from the April meeting. Um, John, would that be you or Trevor? John, if you would please, uh, present us with four A, our case RZ 2508.
Uh, yes, sir, and good evening to everyone. The, um, first case, um, uh, concerns the property located on, uh, Crestview Church Road, uh, just off of Zoo Parkway. Uh, we have received an additional continuance request that you have in your packet. The developers on that are working on possibly a new concept, um, with a site plan, and so, uh, so that will be, um, requested to continue until the, uh, June 5th council meeting. Um, the planning board also granted a continuance at their, their meeting on Monday.
Uh, we will need a motion for that continuance, counselor. Uh, do I hear a motion for that continuance?
I move we allow the request to continue to June 5th, that request of the legislative hearing.
Uh, Mr. Bell, with a motion, a second?
Second.
Ms. Heath with a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Uh, next item?
So this is the corresponding annexation for the same property on Crestview Church Road. The applicant, as part of their continuance request, also asked for, uh, the, uh, matter to be continued until June 5th, uh, as well.
Do I hear a motion for this continuance?
I, I moved if we continue that, like, what's the June 5th?
Uh, motion by Mr. Bell, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you. Our motion carries. Uh, okay, our next item up is our legislative hearing case RZ 2507. If you'd share that with us, please.
Yes, sir, sure. I will, um, be passing out some site plans, building elevations, everything.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Evans, if you'd share with us this case.
And, uh, we're sort of getting a technical issue. So, um, this, um, this item, uh, concerns property that is located, um, on, um, 721 Sunset Avenue and 129 South Cherry Street. Um, and the, uh, property includes a total of three different parcels in their entirety and a portion of, of another parcel. Uh, it is just over two acres, it is inside the city limits. Um, there is one single family dwelling on, uh, one of the parcels, um, and as far as street classification, uh, both, um, south, uh, excuse me, Sunset, um, Avenue and South Cherry Street are, uh, state-maintained minor thoroughfares. Um, and, uh, they are, as far as traffic counts, as you see in your report, both under, uh, capacity, as far as the, uh, the, the road capacity and, and daily traffic, uh, volumes. So, uh, the parcels are identified and outlined in blue in the center of your, uh, your map there. Um, you'll see the, um, the blue is shaded area that runs along Sunset Avenue, that is the, uh, office apartment zoning. That, uh, makes up much of that corridor. The, um, kind of brownish area across South Cherry Street is the recently, uh, approved, um, Cypress on Sunset Apartments, um, on the opposite corner of Cherry and Sunset. And the orange area is a high-density residential, um, that, uh, makes up the southern half of the property, as well as a lot of the, the properties to the, uh, to the south. Um, so this is, um, labeled as Parcels A1 through A4. On the, um, on the next slide, you'll see that, uh, there's a small sliver of Parcel A4, that is not, uh, included in the conditional zoning request. That is why you'll see there's a condition on the boundary map, um, as we get into that part of the report. Uh, but this also shows you the adjoining property owners that were, uh, properly notified is required. Uh, we have also posted signs on the property, and this case has been properly, um, advertised. Um, there are city utilities that are accessible to the site, uh, just a little bit of a slope, um, on the property, but nothing too severe or significant, um, overall. Um, and, um, this property is also partially within the center-city planning area, the most outlying of the three tiers, the Commercial and Employment Center, that's the green area along Sunset. The, the part of the property on the south side of the, of the, uh, of the, uh, property is, um, outside of this area. Um, so this shows you an aerial view of the, uh, of the subject property, whoops, uh, there we go. Um, and some of the surrounding properties, you see the Autumn Place Townhomes just to the east on the right-hand side. Um, also, uh, other residential properties in the area, as well as you go further, further south. So this is taking a look from the ground at the property from Sunset Avenue. Uh, this is from the eastern side of the property. This is looking, uh, near the corner of, um, Sunset and, uh, South Cherry Street at the property. Uh, this is if you're looking west on Sunset Avenue, going away from the property. Uh, this is looking east on Sunset Avenue, so on the left-hand side, you see the Sunset Place Apartments, the property's on your right. Um, this is if you're looking north on, uh, North Cherry Street, um, so the property would, would be back behind, um, on the, the right-hand side here. Uh, this is, um, looking at the property from South Cherry Street. The property's on the right. Uh, Lewis Street is off to the left, Sunset is straight ahead. This is kind of from the southern side. Uh, this is looking, as you're going away from the property, south along South Cherry Street. Uh, and then this is looking west on Lewis Street, this would be just straight across the street from the property. You see there are more single-family residential uses in, in that direction. Um, so, just kind of hitting some of the highlights of the site plan here, um, you see that there are two different, um, structures. Uh, the first larger building has a total of twenty-eight units that are proposed. Uh, this is closest to Sunset Avenue, and then there is a, um, a picnic area that's identified, um, on the site plan in between the building and Sunset Avenue. Um, there is, um, some landscaping, you see the larger, um, symbols there denote, um, uh, trees that are within the street yards. The smaller symbols are for the shrubs within the street yards, also within the interior of the property, um, and around the, uh, the, um, foundations of the, uh, of the buildings. Um, there is also a screen proposed along the, um, the eastern side of the property with an evergreen tree every twenty feet. Um, and so, um, then on the, uh, the southern side of the property, um, you have an evergreen tree every twenty feet and a six-foot wooden fence. Um, and so, I will point out that on the eastern side of the property, there is no fence proposed on that side because there is a fence immediately on the side where the adjoining property is. So the, the fence that's proposed would, would match that, um, and they're only required to do shrubs. So, so they're actually proposing trees in this particular case. Um, so what has been provided as far as the building elevation shows a two-story structure. Um, that bottom floor, um, it was a basement floor, um, that, that is not included with the, uh, with the request. Uh, the building materials that are proposed include, um, on the longer sides of the building, on both sides, um, of that, um, there's a note that the rear view is also the opposite side of the building. Um, they are showing a, a mix of, uh, brick and also kind of a cement, um, hardy plank-type siding, um, that you see, um, kind of the lighter area there. Um, and then on the upper left-hand corner, uh, along Sunset, um, Avenue, um, kind of the shorter side of the building, uh, they are proposing some treatments to, uh, to basically simulate windows in four different areas there, where there would be a different masonry type, um, and kind of a cementuous material that they describe, um, in, in those areas. Um, and then you see the other, uh, wall that is, that is masonry. Um, so there you have the OA 6 District Intent. Um, I won't read that, but it is there in your packets and on the screen. Um, the proposed built-upon area in terms of the impervious coverage is, um, consistent with what we would, um, require for the area within Tier 3, it's actually a little bit under that. Um, the proposed density is also under the Sunset Place Apartments, the, the density is just under twenty-two dwellings per acre. Uh, Sunset Place, for example, has just over twenty-four, uh, units per acre. Uh, the recently-approved Cypress on Sunset has just over thirty-four dwellings per acre, just to kind of give you a comparison in, in this area. Um, so the, the recreation space is also, um, matching what would typically be required with, uh, just over five percent with a passive, uh, passive picnic area with seating, uh, that's in the area I mentioned, uh, facing Sunset, with a fenced area as well. Um, so NC DOT has determined, uh, that, uh, the site plan is acceptable for driveway permitting, um, and, and I covered the building elevations earlier with, um, the importance of those in the land development plan. The applicant has, um, made some, uh, revisions from when this was reviewed by the planning board to, to address some of the comments in terms of the building elevations and building design, and having more of, uh, of a facade on Sunset that is not just a blank facade. Um, so, uh, so, so here we have a total of, um, one item that is, um, asking for a deviation from the typical zoning ordinance requirements within the center-city planning area. Uh, the front yard is based on an average within that block, so typically that would range between forty-nine and sixty-nine feet, where the applicant can choose somewhere within that range to place the building. They are asking that it be, uh, slightly closer than that, at forty-one point six feet. Um, and, um, they are providing, uh, with this, uh, final version of the plan that's proposed, uh, five additional parking spaces over and above what's typically required. They're proposing the additional evergreen, uh, screening, uh, close to Autumn Place, uh, Townhomes. Um, they are also proposing a sidewalk to be constructed along South, uh, Cherry Street. And so, because of the limited right-of-way, that, if this were a general zoning district, may not be required along the entire length, but it will be required with this conditional zoning process. Um, and they are also proposing some stormwater control measures in that area close to, um, South Cherry Street, where there's kind of that, that green space to, to deal with the stormwater control. Um, so, uh, just to, uh, kind of abbreviate the conditions a bit, I have them on the next slides if we need to go over any in more detail, but we have, um, the, uh, recordation of a memorandum of land use restrictions that's required. Also, the permitting requirements are covered with, uh, NC DOT permitting, uh, NCDQ permitting as well. Um, the recordation of the boundary survey, since one of that, those parcels is not with, um, is not included in the conditional zoning, or a portion of that parcel is not. Uh, the sidewalk construction would be, uh, required along the entire length of South Cherry Street, uh, despite right-of-way limitations. Uh, there are some specifications on solid waste collection and mail delivery, um, and also crediting the use of existing vegetation for the applicant to be able to, to use what's there. Um, and, uh, there's also a, a condition on, uh, ADA compliance of walkways between the parking lot and, and the dwelling. There's one area of sidewalk that they may need to extend, uh, we'll get some, we would get some detail on that with, uh, the zoning permitting phase if this is approved. Um, there's a condition that deals with stormwater. Uh, that would require that the post-development runoff not exceed the runoff that exists as the site is today, uh, in a ten-year storm, and, uh, recreational vehicle parking would be prohibited also. So, um, that's kind of a summation of these conditions. We can look at any of these in detail if, if the council wants to, to, um, to do so. Um, so, overall, um, this, uh, staff's consistency statement is that we believe that the most recent, uh, draft of the plan is consistent with the, um, land development plan, uh, statement of intent. Uh, it's located in the primary growth area, uh, it is an infill lot that would reuse an underutilized, uh, piece of property, has access to the, uh, city utilities. Um, and so, given, um, the, uh, the size of the property, the physical layout of the property, uh, providing additional housing opportunities close to services and, and employment, um, and the building elevations, um, we would, um, recommend, um, approval. The planning board also reviewed this and recommended, um, approval of the request as well. But I'll be glad to take any questions if the council has them.
John, do you know what the setback is of the property that's across Sunset Avenue? I'm just trying to visualize what that smaller setback would, like.
Sure. I, I do know, it, it's less than the forty-one feet, I believe it's in the thirty,
Okay.
Thirty to th- thirty-five foot range, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yes, Sunset Place. And then you mentioned existing vegetation, there are gonna be efforts to try and keep some of that? Or is that unknown?
I mean, we, we would prefer that, that, there is a condition that would credit that, so we'll, we'll work with the applicant to, to try to preserve that as, as best as possible.
Okay.
And the bill, building materials as
Yes, sir.
shown on the site plan are condition number ten, is that correct?
Um, yes. Let's see, let me go back, condition number ten. The, um, the building materials would be, um, brick and hardy plank siding, so if that.
That, that is a condition of the, one of the proposed conditions. Number ten.
Look, yeah. So, I mean.
I'm not sure whether That's, it's number ten. Condition or the plan as submitted.
Yeah, it's, it's number, it's number ten on the staff now.
Okay, okay.
Can I mount to a condition?
Right, I see. So, um, I mean, what we would be, um, requiring would be a site plan and building elevations that's consistent with the plan approved, so, so that would kind of be.
Approved, approved plan as opposed to written condition.
As related to the railings and that type of stuff? Um, as far as for the ADA. Well, no, not ADA, I'm just talking about general railings, if you look on the, uh, on the pa, I, I guess it's on the patios or the decks outside. And steps and anything like that. So, I mean, as far as the construction, as far as the maintenance, we, we don't have a sp, I mean, we don't have a specific zoning condition, however, that would fall under the, you know, the building, building code. Make sure the loser built. Intent was, that was all I was asking. Sure. Not do without anything, I think. Sure, um.
John, would the, uh, setback requirements typically include just the building or the, uh, the parking, the paved parking? Would that otherwise need to be part of the setback? Is that part of the expansion of the five extra parking spaces?
Okay.
Encroaches on the setback?
Sure, sure, so I see. So the twenty-five-foot setback that's labeled there along, uh, Cherry Street, so that is, that, that's the parking setback, so, yes, yes, sir. So that, that, that is a separate, um, mechanism in the ordinance.
The forty-nine to sixty, whatever, is it part of the building or?
Correct, yes, sir, that, that's just for the building setback, and that's just on the Sunset Avenue side. Uh, there are no compliance issues with setback on the opposite sides.
And the materials, although there's two separate, sort of, areas, the, the materials do apply to both, both sets of buildings?
Uh, correct, yes, sir.
Site.
Yes, sir.
Just, just a note, we, uh, looked with the drop inlets that are already there that's gonna be changed. Uh, that's only a twelve-inch V, uh, vitriol clay pipe that drains that whole street, so I think it's gonna be imperative we have a good design on that stormwater. What we, what was built in the fifties or sixties, whenever that treatment was done, is nowhere near what's needed today, so that, that VMP will help a lot, you know, taking that surface water off of there, so I think it'd be neat to set a really good design on that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Be incumbent of us to inspect that pot.
And, and we did bring up that as a kind of item of concern to the, uh, to the applicant's engineer as well, to, to look at that.
Any further questions for Mr. Evans? Huh, thank you for that presentation.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience, uh, to speak in favor, uh, represent the owner, uh, in, in this request. Please state your name and sign it one more time.
John took away the list, I can't sign it. So I'm HR Gallimore with Remax Suntrilty, John, you got it? He'll get it in a minute, I think everybody knows who I am.
Probably on the podium, we, we.
We'll fi, we'll figure it out. So I'm representing the, uh, the applicant on this, uh, this, uh, the engineer on this was High Marziano, he can't be with us this evening. I would note that this was, uh, continued from, uh, last month's meeting, and during that time, there's been a good bit of, uh, work with this. Uh, the staff's done an excellent job as far as tweaking this design, where it's suitable and fitting for this, for this area. I also mentioned, these are all one-bedrooms, a little different than the last one that we were up here representing in this sector, which means there'll be less population, just a number of people, and there'll be less automobiles. A couple of noted facts that I particularly like, one, we have a house that's terrible, that's been sitting there in pretty bad shape for a number of years, it will be, it will be coming down, and that's a good thing. I think it's had some homeless issues and a number of other, other things, it will be gone as part of this project, it will be, it will be gone. Also, I think it's, uh, good to note that, uh, Cherry Street will have a sidewalk, there's a lot of traffic, foot traffic that comes from Blueus and Pershing and Uwari Street and Dixon and so forth. I think that's a safety element that will help on this as well. Uh, the, uh, as far as, uh, DOT, I understand they've looked at this, if I'm, if I'm correct, and DOT has, uh, given us a positive nod on that, is that correct, John?
Yes, yes, sir.
So that's been done. Uh, stormwater's certainly an issue all over town, and I, I know that Mr. Marziano and the contractor on this do an excellent job with main, uh, maintaining stormwater and looking at site design and development. I think you'll find that's the case here as well. There are some extra things done for aesthetics, uh, I think, and looking over the notes, there's a couple of windows that really aren't functional, but they'll look good from Sunset, and that aesthetic was important to give that good aesthetic look from Sunset. From a realtor's viewpoint, of which I am, uh, we are short on housing. And, uh, the, anytime we can, can offer more housing in our community, that means workers, that means more industry to have workers, and those are things that are gonna become more and more, we're gonna see more and more of this, it's just a matter of where we place them. You know, it's been a vacant lot for a long time, I think this is putting it to good use, and again, uh, kudos to the council, to the staff, they did a really good job, I think, of helping fine-tune this and getting the best product available for you guys tonight. Should you have any questions, the developers here, but, uh, I think, oh, by the way, Clark will ask his question. He's good with all the conditions. He's good with all the conditions, he's reviewed those, and he's good with all the conditions and will work hard to make this a, a, a nice project.
Thank you, Mr. Gallimore.
Okay. I would like to reserve any comments, should there be any questions later, be able to come make, and answer those.
I do have one question, just related to the stormwater discussion. What, and this may be challenging to answer, what are the chances that there would need to be some type of open water retention or drainage area?
So, uh, that would be a difficult question without knowing the, the actual runoff percentage calculation.
Okay.
But anything that would slow the water down is better than what you have now. And if you could have a, an open basin, uh, today, most are designed to look And if you could have a, an open basin, today, most are designed to look like landscaping and aesthetics. You don't want something that's a fence, you don't want something deep, you want it to slow the water down and detain it and-
The one on the street looks like a little putting green inside of it.
Right, exactly, exactly, okay.
Correct, so, yeah, that, I would go for the aesthetic look, not that engineered structure that's got weeds and things like that. You don't have that much of purview surface here, so.
Got it.
I think what their proposal, you know, that area, you could do essentially a swell, and that would work.
Swells usually are a good job. Thanks for your time and attention.
And it's easy to maintain.
Is there anyone else in the audience that, that would like to address this case at this time? Well, um, I will offer a comment that, uh, we, we hear a number of requests from time to time from folks and, and as, as these projects develop, input from the planning board, input from staff, and it's, it's refreshing to see a, a plan returned to us with items that were of concern to us to be incorporated. I do, I do think they went down a, a bit of a checklist, but that's, uh, that's nice that they take that, that care in what they're presenting. Um, at this time, I will ask the wishes of the council. If anyone has any further questions or motion that they'd like to make on this matter.
Mr. Mayor Protam, based on the consistency statement and reasonable in the statement provided by staff and the planning board, I move to approve the rezoning request conditioned with the proposed condition by staff and acceptable to the applicant.
We have a motion by Mr. Bale to approve consistency in the rezoning request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Troglin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, good luck with your project, and we look forward to seeing it put to good use. Okay, next item up, uh, Recreation Director Jonathan Sermon will discuss and request council action for some rules for the downtown farmer's marketplace.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to discuss the downtown farmer's market, as was mentioned. In your package, you should have an ordinance, a copy of an ordinance, to amend Article eleven of the Cultural Recreation Services Policy Manual. Article eleven is the downtown farmer's market. It will address some technical corrections, as well as hopefully integrate a availability chart into the manual. The technical corrections are pretty straightforward. It's just some job managerial, job titles that changed over the years that needed updating. So it, we wanted to add in the availability chart, we thought it'd be a good time to update all those as well. The, what I want to really talk about is the integration of a fruit and vegetable availability chart. This will help staff in protecting the homegrown integrity of the market. As you all know, the downtown farmer market is a homegrown only market. The, the vendors have to grow what they sell. The, each vendor is required to get a grower certification from the county's Cooperative Extension Office, which they go out, they're the experts, they inspect everything that's being grown, and verify that they are growing what they're selling. The problem we're running into is, we're having an issue with vendors that have illegal produce. They, they, they have tomatoes in the ground, as an example. But the growing season for a tomato is usually second week of June to sometime in October. So when a vendor shows up with good size, good quantity of tomatoes the middle of May, yes, they have tomatoes on their growing list, on their grower certifications, they can sell them, but they may not be their tomatoes. So in order to protect that homegrown and help staff determine if it's homegrown, the North Carolina Department of Agriculture puts out a, a chart that lists basically every type of produce you can have, and the growing season for those, those types of produce. So we would like to have that chart integrated into the policy manual to help staff, because currently, if we get a complaint from a vendor, staff has to go visit the farm to see if they're actually growing it. And we, we provide services to a seven-county area. We stretch all the way down to Richmond County, Almans, any, any county that borders, and then we try to get the peaches, and that's why we go down to Richmond. So just to keep staff from having to go all over the countryside, we're hoping that this, this chart will, will help us in that endeavor. So that's, that's why we would like to get that included if we could.
Speaking of someone that does her farming, it loads foods. So, uh, uh, expressing my ignorance on this matter, but, I mean, I've heard of hothouse tomatoes or greenhouse vegetables. Does that, is that a story someone could tell, or what?
Well, the Cooperative Extension actually has a, an extra line on their forms that says greenhouse, that they have a greenhouse, which that would then include your greenhouse tomatoes, or anything else growing in that greenhouse. That would extend that growing period. So there are exceptions to that chart, but this puts the onus back on the vendor to prove to us that it, that it, they are growing what they're selling.
He should have a little card, I, I grow them in the greenhouse or something.
Exactly.
Very good. I was just curious.
How big a problem is this?
If you ask the vendors, it's a huge problem.
Okay.
I don't think it's that big a problem, but it is an issue that, that the vendors have brought to our attention, and asked us to do something about it. So this was a, a step we thought we could take that was realistic enough to-
How, how's the enforceability, he's going to do that, but?
Do what now?
He's going to enforce it.
Oh, we are. We have, we have a market manager on site that checks every day that what you have on your grower certification is.
Every day, anytime it's open, somebody will go through and check it.
Yes, yeah.
So if someone has to prove that they have hothouse tomatoes, and I'll, I'll throw a name out, there's Whittaker Farms has a huge greenhouse tomato operation, and they have tomatoes very early spring.
Yes.
And, and I know you're aware of that, so.
Yeah, but again, I go back to-
You're seeing somebody out there to make-
No, again, I go back, again, I go back to, that would be, already be checked off on the Cooperative Extension's grower certification, that Whittaker Farms has greenhouse tomatoes, which enlarges the growing season. So they would be eligible because, because of the greenhouse, they're going to have tomatoes ready in April or May.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they qualify, and we enforce it.
They qualify, we enforce it.
They qualify if those folks are legally selling their own produce.
Yes, if they're legally selling their own produce, they can-
They, they, that's what I'm saying, they qua-, they, they quantify, not qualify, they, they approve that whether or not, and then we enforce it.
That, that's correct, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes, it's just to protect against third-party sale.
That's exactly what-
So I might have somewhere else coming and reselling it here, so, gist of it.
That's the whole gist, yes, sir.
Never ceases delays me the things that come under our purview. Armed with this, all right.
But if there are no further questions, we recommend approval by reference.
Because without saying that each vendor, they go over the rules at the start of the season, right?
Yes, they all, they all get a copy of the rules when they come in to fill out their vendor application, and then if this does pass, since the market has been open for a week already, we will update their copies of the rules. Yep.
Well, all in favor of hothouse tomatoes?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I move we adopt the ordinance, uh, amending the policy manual by reference.
Mr. Bale has made a motion to amend. Have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bird. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thanks, sir.
Of course, the way. Okay, we're all the way up to now our current meeting. Enclosed in your packet, everyone has, uh, your consent agenda items, uh, I presume have been reviewed. Is there any item that someone would like to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Mayor Protam, I may do an update on item B, item six B.
Yes, please.
I was informed by the General Assembly this morning that, uh, that item is no longer a concern in the House. It may show back up in conference and the budget, but, uh, for the time being, it is, is dead on Robin.
Good.
There was lengthy debate on the floor yesterday. I would recommend we not adopt it, but be very vigilant in, uh, legislature's ever, efforts to preempt local authority and control.
Your recommendation is to pull item six B from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, if you like.
Uh, uh.
So moved.
We have a motion, and a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Swears. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes with great relief, it's no longer needed.
For now.
Well, there you go. Um, okay.
I guess we need to approve the balance of the-
Do what?
I move we approve the balance of the consent agenda, saving-
Yeah, we need to get back to that. Thank you very much. Mr. Bale has a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Bird says a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. All right, speeding right along to item seven. Back to zoning, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I hope you can pass the bail, just like the other one this week.
Do these come with readers?
Yes.
So this request involves property located at 124 Woodcrest Road. The request is to amend this district to I-two conditional zoning, which is an amended version of the, um, the current zoning, and the use this proposes for, um, several different uses, including manufacturing, processing, and assembly heavy, which is specifically for the use of the property for a machine shop, a warehouse, and wholesale distribution use, and some auxiliary open storage as well. So, um, the, there's a little bit of history in this property that's fairly recent. Back in 2021, this was most recently rezoned for a warehouse and wholesale distribution land use. This was known as the Hunt Electric Supply that has relocated, and so this is for a new user, for a machine shop. And I will mention that the, um, required notice has been mailed by both the applicant and the staff. The property is published, or, uh, posted with a sign as required, and, uh, legal notification has been published in the, the newspaper. So, um, the property is just over six acres. It is within the city limits. We do have city utilities available. Both Woodcrest Road and Northside Terrace are local streets. Woodcrest is city-maintained, Northside Terrace is state-maintained. So the property is parcel A that's on your map. The purple area and the adjoining purple area to the south, those have an industrial zoning. The yellow areas are residentially zoned. The, um, the, um, the red areas along North Fayetteville Street primarily have a commercial designation. And the topography of the property does, um, kind of drop off if you go from the intersection of Northside Terrace down towards, um, North Fayetteville Street, as you'll see on the, the photos. And there are city utilities along Woodcrest as well. So this shows you an aerial view of the subject property and the, the building and the parking that exists. So the majority of this parcel is undeveloped as, as a wooded area. And so with this request, that would remain, and, uh, so there are no additional, um, building, buildings that are proposed, no expansion of the building, no significant expansion of the parking area that would be proposed. So, uh, this is the property from Woodcrest Road. This is kind of from the, um, the eastern edge of the property, looking up the hill toward the developed part of the property. This is looking east on Woodcrest Road. This is if you're looking directly into the subject property. So you see the existing facility and the loading dock, and, and then some of the area that's screaming for open storage kind of on the, the right side of the, of the building. So this would be looking at the subject property from Woodcrest Road and Northside Terrace. This is if you're looking north on Northside Terrace. So this is, um, a, a good ways away from the building on the, the northern corner where a lot of that buffer is that you saw on the aerial, aerial photos.
Right, much up the hill.
Yes, yes, sir. So then this is looking south on Northside Terrace. So this is if you're standing at the intersection, looking in that direction. So you see some industrial activity on the left-hand side that adjoins the property. So you have the definitions of the I-two district and the manufacturing, processing, and assembly, they're there for reference. I won't read those unless there's a question about them. And same for the warehouse, wholesale distribution, and open storage. And each of these uses would be permitted in the underlying I-two industrial zoning district. And as I mentioned, there are no, uh, significant changes to the site in terms of the building or the parking. This kind of shows you the, uh, the amount of the area that is currently developed. If you zoom in, you can see the existing parking spaces, the driveway, which is a wide, wider driveway that was reviewed by council back in 2021 and approved as far as the configuration for, for the loading spaces. So it's, it is in place currently, and, um, this is a, a little bit of a closer aerial view of the, of the property. So there are just a few conditions. Just to summarize, those include what is standard with the memorandum of land use restrictions being recorded, also permitting that would be required in terms of zoning permits or any other, other permits needed. And also, there's a condition that addresses preservation of existing vegetation. In order to be consistent with the approved site plan, the vegetation that you saw on that and on the aerial photo would need to remain. If there were to be a small amount that had to be removed, there is a condition that would require that be replanted. There is also a small area that's outside of the wooded area that potentially could accommodate perhaps an extra parking space. That does, the condition does allow for that accommodation of that. And so there are the conditions in detail. We can certainly cover those if there are any questions.
It appears that the property is not changing ownership.
Um-
If, if, if it is, it's just by title.
I'll save it up.
Very good, thank you. Um, that, that's a, that's a significant plus from what I can tell, I was just curious about that.
So, um, in terms of the land development plan, the, uh, plan designates the property for industrial use. It is in the primary growth area in the northeastern sector of the, of the, the city. And we have a total of, um, seven goals and policies that support the request. The only one that's negative toward the request is ideally, we would have a transition between an industrial zoning and a residential zoning, but with the amount of buffering that exists on the, um, on the property, and that buffering being retained, we, we don't see that as a, as a significantly negative factor. So, so the overall consistency statement that we have is that, um, the, the plan designates the property for industrial use. The northeastern small area plan specifically calls out accommodation and expansion of existing industrial uses, in which this is already built out as that. And as, as mentioned, the tree preservation helps with the transition. The industrial use has been on the property for decades. We have other industrial uses in the area, and the conditional zoning process can allow some protections to those adjoining property owners. So I'd be glad to take any questions.
The extent of it is not changing the building much, if any, and we're moving from warehousing to machine.
Correct.
Basically it.
Yes, yes, sir.
If the business takes off and they would have the occasion to expand, they've got to come back to the zoning and, and change that. I'm just looking, I got all that wooded area back there, I hate to see them constrained to any kind of growth potential.
Sure, yes, sir. There is a very limited amount in, of expansion that the ordinance allows, but it is either ten percent or a thousand square feet, whichever is less. So that, that's kind of the typical, um, expansion allowance.
Anyone else?
I missed it. How many jobs were potentially created?
Um, I'm not certain. The applicant may be able to speak to, to that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir.
This time we'll open the floor for anyone that wishes to speak for this request, if they would, please come forward.
I'm back.
And you are?
I'm H.R. Gallimore, and I signed in last time, and it'll be right under me again, so I won't sign in again. I represent Mr. Sam Hunt. Sure you guys know who that is. I know you like what he's done on the corner of Salisbury and Ross. This was his temporary home in his first life, for a short history lesson. It was Affordable Furniture's overflow warehouse area in the day. And then they sold it, and it ended up in the Hunt's hands, and they needed to renovate that building on the corner of Salisbury, I mean, yeah, Salisbury and Ross did a fine job doing that. That's, that's really improved, that's a nice, nice location. So that left him with a- So that left him with a surplus property, and, uh, they asked me to put it on the market for lease, not really wanting to sell it, but some folks came along, and I warned them they would. They wanted to buy it, and we worked out a deal subject to getting the zoning for a machine shop. And that's where we stand. And answer, Mr. Duncan, to your question, eight to 10 employees is what they have here. Uh, they're, they're, they run a really nice organization. They're, they're young guys, younger guys. As hell, everybody's young compared to me and Walker. But, uh, okay, Clark, don't laugh. And, and in answer to the buffer, the unusable portion of the property as it stands today is, is, exceeds any buffer you would ever ask for. Should they want to do something different in the future, they'll have to come before you with a different plan and different request. Uh, the neighbors have been noted. Mailings have gone out. Had no, uh, no problems, not even from Eric Newton. He thought it was a great idea. He offered to come with his flags and do a big hoopla. I encouraged him not to. So I think it's, uh. When I went to the city, it, it just missed, it just barely missed for the machine shop. And, uh, talked to Justin and staff, and they said if we added this, they thought it could work. One interesting note, did you see that picture of the side entryway to the side drive-in door? Never seen one. It's heated. And Hunt did that. So they don't have to worry about bad weather getting in the building. I thought it was pretty cool. It's a nice building. It's a super nice building, and, uh, I think it will, uh, continue to perform for them and the city. Um, available for any questions? Should anyone have a, a question or concern?
Conditions amenable. The conditions amenable.
Absolutely, Clark. You got, you got me. I missed you, I missed you last time. You got, you got you last time. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gallimore. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in regards to this request? Seeing none, I will, uh, ask the council to entertain discussion or possibly a motion.
Mr. Mayor Protem, based on the consistency and reasonable statement that's been presented and staff recommendation and planning board recommendation, I move that we approve this rezoning request as presented with the conditions applied as have been discussed.
We have a motion by Ms. Heath. Have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Swears. All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on, Mr. Evans. We have a quasi judicial hearing. No, I skipped one. We have a legislative hearing, RZ 2510, excuse me. Let's see. I swapped. I swapped agendas with my notes here. Let me swap this back. Mr. Bell? And you have a disclosure you'd like to share with us?
I do. Uh, regarding item seven B, and this, uh, this property is immediately adjacent and abuts, uh, the property of the Good Shepherd Church. I am a member of the Good Shepherd Church. More importantly, though, I am a part of the, uh, vestal, which is the leadership group of the, uh, of the church. I discussed this potential issue with, with, uh, our staff attorney, and, uh, we have come to the conclusion that I do not need to recuse myself with respect to this matter. But I did want to put on the record that we did make that inquiry and make that disclosure of my representation of the, of the leadership of Good Shepherd.
Right, and often it is a good day to be at.
At Good Shepherd.
Good, at Good Shepherd. The, uh, Clark often posts that, that's, uh, I enjoyed that. Um, okay, Mr. Evans, you're up, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Um, this, um, is a request for property located along Mountain Road, Lincoln Avenue, and Springdale Lane. The request is to rezone from a, um, high-density residential conditional zoning to a medium-density conditional zoning. And the land use is, uh, single-family, uh, and two-family dwellings that would be considered with this request. Um, so the, um, applicant is, uh, Robert Edmund Residential LLC. Um, and just to give a little bit of history, this has a conditional zoning from 1982, uh, where the property was rezoned to the current, um, RA six conditional zoning district, uh, to allow a maximum of 24 condo-style units on the property. Um, the, um, notification has been made by both the applicant, um, and staff in terms of mailing, um, that both the applicant and staff did. The applicant, I understand, also had a, uh, public, uh, meeting prior to the planning board on this request. Um, and, uh, the property has been properly advertised, uh, and a sign is posted as well, uh, for the request. So, um, the property is about three and a quarter acres. There's one parcel identification number. Um, the parcels are within the corporate limits. You'll see as we get into the presentation that there is an area of street, uh, that's proposed that is outside of the, uh, of the corporate limits. Uh, it's undeveloped currently, um, and we do have, um, city utilities available to the property. Um, the streets are, um, all local streets. Mountain Road is city maintained. Uh, Springdale Lane, as we'll get into, uh, is partially ci- uh, city maintained and partially private. Uh, Lincoln Avenue is state maintained. So it's kind of a mixture of, of road maintenance in this area. Um, the, um, the, the parcel is that orangish color that's surrounded by yellow. That's the high-density, surrounded by either low or medium-density residential in the surrounding area. Um, in terms of topography, uh, the slope does drop off on Lincoln Avenue. It's a little bit steeper on that side than on the, uh, Mountain Road and Springdale Lane, uh, side of the, of the property. And you also see the city utilities with the, uh, city water in blue, city sewer in, um, in green. Um, the aerial map shows you the primarily residential, uh, nature of the area. Uh, the one exception to the southwest is the, um, the, the church there along Mountain, uh, Mountain Road, just to the, just to the southwest of the property. Um, so this shows you a little bit of a closer view of the, of the property and some of the immediate surrounding land uses. And so along Mountain Road, you have primarily single-family residences, and then along, uh, Lincoln Avenue, it's more two-family or duplex dwellings. So just to kind of go through some photos here, this is if you're looking at the property from Mountain Road. You see Springdale Lane off to the left. Uh, this is another view from Mountain Road. This would be kind of from the southern, uh, southwestern side of the property. Whoops, this, um, this is along Lincoln Avenue, so you kind of see the gray drop off here on that part of the, part of the property. Um, this is looking south on Lincoln Avenue. Two-family dwellings here. Looking north, you see the two-family dwellings, uh, along that street. Um, this is looking south on Mountain Road, where the, the subject property would be off to the left, kind of back behind, uh, the photo. This is looking north on Mountain Road. Um, so you do have, um, some, uh, some duplex-style dwellings on a parcel there, uh, just to the north, um, on Mountain Road on that side. Uh, this is looking east on Springwood Lane. So this would be, uh, with Mountain Road would be back behind. Um, and this area right here is about where the, uh, city maintenance ends right before you get to the driveway for the, for the home that's on the left. Uh, and then it's a paved area that is, that is privately maintained. The property is on your right on this, this slide. Uh, this is looking east on Springwood Lane. This is around the, uh, the very end of where the pavement, um, is. Um, if you're looking to the, uh, to, to the east, uh, the property's on your right. This is if you're looking kind of back behind the, the property, um, or the property's on the left, rather. Um, this is looking towards Mountain Road. You can kind of make out, um, the stop sign there just ahead of kind of where that, um, dotted, uh, red line is. That's about where the city maintenance ends. So it's a very short stretch of less than 200 feet of city maintenance here along, uh, Springwood Lane. Um, so just, just to kind of go through the, the concept here, we have the city limits about where you saw kind of that last photo with the red line here on Spring, uh, Springdale Lane. Um, and, uh, for the first seven lots that you see, lots one through seven, um, there are single-family dwellings that are proposed on, on each of those lots. So they are m- m- more than 10,000 square feet on each of the lots, so they do meet the R10, uh, density standards. Um, you have on the Lincoln Avenue side, uh, the potential for two-family dwellings on that side. And those lots are also consistent with typical R10 density. Um, you also have a proposed private sewer easement. Um, this is a very conceptual drawing of that, but that's about where it could, could possibly go. Um, and, um, if we go to the next slide, um, what is being proposed that exceeds what's typical for an ordinance requirement for single-family and two-family is a no-cut buffer along the southern side of lots one, uh, and then three through seven, and then the western side of lots eight, uh, and nine. So, uh, that would be vegetation that would remain. Um, there are some setback deviations that are being requested. Um, you see those, um, shown in yellow for lots two, um, and, and lot one. Lot two is on the corner of Spring, uh, Dale and, uh, Mountain Road. And then a side setback deviation on lot number four. Uh, you also have a slightly less width on the lots, um, as you go into the, the, uh, development on Springdale Lane, uh, that's 60 feet rather than the typical 75-feet, uh, lot width that we would have in R10 on lots, um, four through six. Um, so in terms of the road configuration, so we have the yellow area. That is, uh, about where the, the city maintenance, um, is. You can kind of see that labeled where it says, uh, approximate location of end of city maintained street. Once on the roadway you go beyond that point, it's outside of the city limits. So that would, uh, area would not currently be eligible for city maintenance, uh, because of that, of that situation. Um, the area in orange is where, uh, there is some pavement, but it's not city maintained. Um, and then the area in gray would be, um, proposed to be paved, uh, as a 20-foot-wide, um, paved roadway, uh, which would, would be compliant with, with fire code, uh, regulations. Uh, and then there would be a turnaround shown, uh, in between, um, lots five and, and six with a recorded easement as, as part of that turnaround. So that is the, uh, that is the applicant's proposal. Um, so the, uh, the building elevations that are shown, um, these depict the single-family dwellings, um, that you see. They're showing a dimension typically of 36 by 24 of, um, for, for these, uh, single-family lots. Um, and so, um, so here you have definitions for the different uses. Um, I won't go through these unless there are questions, but they are here, uh, up on your screen and in your report. Um, as, as I mentioned, the density is about what we would typically see in R10 at 3.4 dwellings per acre. Um, the planning board reviewed this, um, this request, and, uh, they determined that the, um, the applicant, uh, would need to show a turnaround easement on the most recent site plan. So they did recommend approval, but subject to that condition. Um, and so after the planning board's review, um, staff has continued to work with the applicant on, um, from their original concept, they were showing a gravel roadway when it went to planning board. And so, uh, so a- after, uh, different city departments reviewed the request, uh, I think everyone's comfort was more for a paved roadway, uh, if it is going to be privately maintained because of being outside of the city limits and not eligible for city maintenance. Um, and the design that's shown, uh, would, um, set that up for the potential, if the property is annexed in the future, uh, and, uh, the, um, the, um, app, the owner wishes to request city maintenance of the, um, of the roadway, uh, we, we just believe that was more conducive to the potential for, for that in the future if the property's annexed and that, that question, uh, were to, uh, were to arise. Um, also, um, with the paved roadway, uh, we believe that it was, uh, a much better situation for, um, uh, for different city operations, including sanitation vehicles. And so, so this was reviewed by, um, by the different city departments to, to kind of have this as the proposal. Um, so just to summarize the conditions, um, and we'll have these as we go into the next slides, but just to kind of be brief, um, the conditions address the, the standard memorandum of land use restrictions being recorded, uh, NC DOT permitting. NC DOT has, um, given us comments that, that this would be eligible for their driveway permitting. They don't have any immediate concerns with that. Um, the road maintenance, uh, agreement, since this would be proposed as a privately maintained, uh, drive, uh, would, would be a requirement. Also, an indemnification, um, provision that would, um, indemnify the city in terms of our operations for, um, for trash removal or, or, or other city operations. Um, and, um, also the turnaround being constructed satisfactorily for city departments, that would have to be inspected and reviewed to ensure that's built to, to the, um, departmental standards. Um, and then, uh, the requirement that the no-cut buffer be maintained or replanted if for some reason there were to be any vegetation removed. Uh, so, so here you have those conditions in detail. Again, we can kind of go through if there's any questions. But, um, the, uh, proposed land use map designates the property for, uh, neighborhood residential use. Uh, it is in the primary growth area and in the northwestern quadrant of the city. Um, and we have a total of, um, seven goals and policies that we believe support the request. Only one that's negative toward the request. We believe that the latest design on the roadway does help mitigate concerns over the, the roadway infrastructure. Um, so, um, the, uh, reasonableness and consistency statement, um, that, uh, staff has and the planning board adopted as well is that, um, we believe the map amendment is consistent with the land development plan, uh, because the density is consistent with the proposed land use map. Um, the area consists of single-family and two-family dwellings. Um, that is, in, in staff's opinion and the planning board's, also more consistent with, uh, what the plan calls for than a high-density, uh, designation that currently exists for the property. Um, also, uh, this provides housing opportunities on an infill parcel. Uh, it is in the primary growth area, having access to city services and employment. Um, and, um, so also the provision of infrastructure, we believe, um, has been addressed, um, uh, in a better way with the, um, with the current plan than, than what was originally submitted. And so that was the one item that we, we wanted to take a little bit of a closer look at from the time the application was filed. Um, and we believe that, um, any of those conditions or any of those concerns can be addressed through the conditional, uh, zoning process. So, um, so staff's initial recommendation was to, um, approve, but subject to the consistency and reasonable in the situation, um, uh, statements as far as working through the roadway situation. We believe this has largely been, been done, uh, and believes the change from, uh, going from gravel to asphalt is more consistent with, uh, city plans and policies. Um, and, uh, the planning board's, uh, recommendation about the, um, turnaround and easement, uh, we believe that this plan also meets that, um, recommendation. So, um, I'll be glad to pause and take any questions if the council has them.
John, just, just curious.
Sure.
Is, is Corrus Street open?
Uh, it is, it is not, uh, at least on the section. I can go back to, um, if, if you go to the north. So yet, uh, that, uh, it is not.
I'm just, it's just showing. I just, I know it's dedicated. I just didn't know it was open, in any respect.
Right, so it, it was basically a platted paper street. So it's kind of in the same situation that, that this is. It was platted, never extended, so.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
All seven lots are in the city limits.
Correct.
But about halfway down the road, the city, the, the, that, the back portion of the road is not in city limits. I mean, where the gray areas.
Right, right. That, that's right. The, the roadway itself is outside of the city limits.
Roadway is outside.
It's kind of where the quandary is about the city being able to, to maintain that area.
But, so we have to provide services for all those house, the seven houses there, right? So garbage and everything would have to go down and turn around.
Yeah, yeah, uh, yes, sir, as, as proposed.
Did I understand, John, you say these will be condominium type of development?
So, that was the, that was the previous plan in eighty-two, and that was never, never built. So, with this, it would be single-family dwellings on their own lots, or a two-family duplex dwelling, limited to lots eight and nine, the way the conditions are written. Lots one through seven that are closer to Mountain Road and Springdale would all have to be single-family.
I'm like Bill. That little section of paved road there, who's gonna take care of it? Gives me heartburn. You know, that's.
Is that a right of way, or is that private property? I mean, it says the Corrus Street is a thirty-foot public right of way. Who is the public?
Right. So, the way that's written, I mean, this is.
This is probably what we need to have this discussion.
I mean, it says it's in a plat book. It must belong to somebody.
Well.
It's only halfway there to be. The part that's not inside the city is only halfway there. It's listed as you're reading it. But, if you're beyond the city, the city cannot accept and offer dedication. To give subdivision plat approval is not an acceptance of an offer of dedication. The city has to either do it by resolution or by its actions. With the actions, the part that's in the city, that does show up on the power bill. That is maintained. That has been offered and accepted. That is public right of way. Once you go beyond that, and outside the city, it's nothing but an offer that's never been accepted by the city of Ashboro. The city can't at this point, and DOT would not accept that, given its current situation.
I mean, who owns that portion of the right of way north of what is actually the lots, where in the city, up to, city maintained up to the yellow, but who owns that?
That would be a matter of going through the title search and seeing. You can go all the way back to the original subdivider. It also depends on how people have drawn the lots over time, and I certainly will defer to any title search that's been done. In some cases, you will see where lot lines are drawn all the way to the center line of what was offered. They certainly have an argument that they have the possession of it. But, if the lot line stopped where that platted street is, even though no one's accepted it, then you have argument the original subdivider, or any heirs and the signs would have acceptance to it.
And they could prevent access.
Anyone can, that's why you do need to get the maintenance agreement to try to deal with that. I don't want to jump ahead of any research the council for the applicant has made, but that's why it does have to be looked at. Who signs the maintenance agreement? Who has the rights of access to it? The only thing that I have.
I'm still confused, though. If I'm reading this right, correct me if I'm, I see a water line. I see a sewer line. I see approximate location of a water valve. I see a thirty-foot public right of way. Now, I don't mention nothing about street. The street right of way is typically much at least fifty feet. Is that not a public right of way for the city of Ashboro to have a water line on?
No. It's a utility easement. Not.
A difference with little to no distinction in my understanding, but I understand what you said.
Very much a distinction from the city's perspective.
It's essentially the same as when we've heard these proposals wanting to put a walking path on the sewer easement, to use the terms correctly. That is not what the easement was purchased for. Therefore, if you wanted another use, you had to make arrangements for whether it was purchased or not. It had to be. So, but, so this area, though, is in some manner controlled by Public Works as far as access to their water line.
Correct. But, only for a utility easement for that.
Yeah.
And only within the confines of what our standard utility easement be.
Easement being not ownership, it belongs to somebody.
Well, that's what I was saying. The title search will go through and take.
And somebody could petition us for annexation because we can't take it.
Correct.
Under, under current law.
Correct.
Under any action we can cause.
And the city would evaluate, you've made a correct statement, and the city would evaluate an annexation petition to see, is that credible, that there is an owners, that the owners of the property within the petition area have ownership, that all of them have signed, and then the city responded to that annexation petition?
So, do we assume that these properties have legal access to this easement?
Well.
In the gray, the gray area on the draw I'm referring to.
Generally speaking, I don't, like I said, I haven't had a reason to do a title search, but generally speaking, if you have an offer of dedication of an easement, that's not, excuse me, right of way, that has not been accepted, but there's been a conveyance of the property by reference to the plat, where that is that, they do have an easement individually to use that right of way to get in and out of the property. That doesn't mean it's been accepted by the public.
So, right. But, lots four, five, six, and seven, they're presumed to have an easement agreement for the area in gray.
I'm working, I'm.
For the purpose of the driveway.
Working on the premise that the thieves, where they got their lots, made a reference to the plat, but showing that, yes, they have an easement.
Right. So, is that something that our purview should even be concerned, which is not addressed Mr. Swerzer's question whatsoever. Theoretically, that would require some sort of a homeowner's agreement or something or other if they were to have some sort of perpetual maintenance agreement.
And that's one of the conditions that I believe is in there over a private maintenance agreement.
There is. I did not see that, but I just took a purview of it.
But, the developer.
And I don't want to jump ahead too far of the applicant.
Developer could build a road with the easement, not owning the property.
The city would have, the city would take no position on their assertion that they can get the private maintenance agreement and that they can go through and build what they need to build.
I mean, under the assumption that they have the easement, yeah, they can build what they've been given easement for. I mean.
That's, the city would not have anything.
Yeah, we're not here to determine the validity of that, but that is permissible.
I regret I have to be a little measured in how I respond with this because I can't give an opinion over what other property owners may assert they do or do not have, but from the city.
You're doing pretty good. I'm struggling to provide a question.
We can't, we can't allow these four houses to be built there. We can't provide services for them. Are we sure there's gonna be a way to drive in there and do the services?
And they're offering, they're offering to address that, when you want to.
I think that was probably the next thing we could talk about is, in discussions, the idea has been is that if they could get us titled and annex that portion, this has been.
Be better for all.
Correct. Be better for all. And I think this has been what we would call an abandoned subdivision. And it needs to be cleaned up. And so, for that portion of area there, I would offer that the city has some responsibility. And so, we would split the cost of getting that road up to a standard that we can maintain and service, provide emergency service, provide trash pickup to those citizens. Because, my feeling is, and I've seen this happen before, if you do go forward with just giving them an easement access, they're gonna pay taxes. They're gonna pay for city services, and they're gonna be here in years asking the future council that sits here, why can't I get my street paved? Why can't I get my stuff fixed?
Oh, yeah. It's, that's, that's an ongoing recurring scenario. But, to begin that process, and we'll let Mr. Will Hoyt speak here and answer a lot of these questions, I'm sure. But, the, they've got to initiate that, and then.
I think if they could deliver us clean title, then I think you got some work.
That cleans up. Any other questions for Mr. Evans?
Hearing none. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We'll, we'll call on for someone to speak, hopefully knowledgeably about this. And we'll be more informed. Well, I'll tell this much, Plan Zone staff earns their paycheck because they've been working on this one. I will, I'm Robert Will, for the record, Will Hoyt Hatchell at one-hundred Sunset Avenue, right down the street here. This parcel of land, to the amazement to most of the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting, was previously zoned in nineteen-eighty-two for twenty-four condos on three-point-two-five acres.
And the wisest thing that happened is nobody built them.
That's right. So, this proposal to you today is to change that from an RA six conditional zoning to an RA ten conditional zoning, from high-density to medium-density. Seven single-family units that exceed ten thousand square feet each, and two duplex units, not there, not there off Mountain Road, back off Lincoln. There'll be buffers between all the joint and property owners. They were, the neighborhood meeting folks were very pleased at the reduction from a high-density to a medium-density. And I know that's medium, but that's almost low-density compared to twenty-four condos. In this process, there was a discussion at the planning board about this road and how we're gonna do this and everything. I think originally the process was saying, what are we gonna do, an all-surface and doing road maintenance agreement? But, after further discussions with staff and further considerations by the petitioners, they're willing to put, they said, look, we need to put asphalt on this road, and we're gonna do that. We need to give a turnaround easement on our property for public services, everything from garbage to fire trucks that can come in there, back up, and pull out. This is an unusual track because it's sitting right there, and I think it's not in Springdale, but the bottom line is that road's not even the city limits. It's in the county because it was never annexed by the city. That's a puzzling concept, and I'd be interested to go back to minutes to figure out how that happened.
We have many of those.
I know you do. I represent a few of those cities, too. So, bottom line, I think the purpose of this petition is, okay, we got three-point-two-five acres. We want to put seven single-family homes per lot, and then two duplexes, which fit, on the other side with Lincoln Avenue. Go ahead, George. The housing, we're gonna be, they're not gonna be large units. We've got situations, Tyler was telling me, that, you know, a lot of teachers work two or three years. Well, guess what's happened to prices of homes in the United States, plus in Randolph County? You had homes that used to be a hundred-and-fifty-thousand. They're closing up to close to three-hundred thousand now. Those teachers don't have the down payment to get in there and do a loan. So, I think they were looking to try to put some houses in there that are not huge, but they're nice. And, they can pay a mortgage that's very comparable to what rent is now in a lot of places here in town. And so, as you look at the process, this property, it's located right there off Mountain Road. Episcopal Church down, right down the road from it. It does back up to Lincoln, but this, the way the topo is, it's gonna be separated. Those two duplex units, which either be two or one, as you see the seven lots that are phased out there. That Springdale's right up there to the northwest of that track. It goes right along, and it's paved a portion way, and the rest of it looked like it had been built up to be paved, but nothing was ever done. There are, there's a home on the left, there's also a home in the back. So, the process, what we were pressing was, take this, make it a lower-density housing development, and then proceed to work out the access, the easement, the, work out the asphalt, and work out a turning, turning-around easement for public services to give all these people who are located in the city of Ashboro those public services. And staff reviewed this thing. It was pointed out, doing the twenty-foot buffers along, we're residential, joining owners, looking at the, how they would fit the various homes on there, it seemed to be a plan that made sense. It made sense to the neighbors that came to the meeting, and they were very, very, I think pleasantly surprised that we weren't trying to cram a lot of homes on very small lots. It's, that area is really neat. It's a nice area. Walk past it, you hardly even know it's there. But, I think one of the, one of the thing that this petition, the petitioner was wanting to do is that, after going through the conditions that were submitted by the city, they're in agreement with them. They're in agreement with them. I don't know how this, I mean, seriously, I don't know how this thing came about where that road was never parked or annexed. I suppose the city had never annexed this portion of the land because it was right back to Lincoln Avenue. But, that's a topic for another day. I think we can take some steps to address all this. I think the goal in the future is to look at it annexation. But, right now, what we're asking the board to consider is rezoning those lots. There's seven single-family homes, two single or two-family duplexes that were gonna be facing Lincoln. There's gonna be a buffer between them and the single-family homes. It does, it's consistent, as John Evans expertly advises, it's consistent with land use plan. It's consistent with, in reasonable contour, in a conformance with all your policy goals. It appears, it is a good use of this land. There's needed housing. It's the consistency statement, the reasonable fits this project. It's just the quirk in it was the fact that there had not been an annexation of that other area that had joined it. But, the road is paved right up there, about two-hundred feet, and then rest, the beds built up. It was, it was being prepared to be a city street, and I'm not quite sure what happened on that end. Because you can tell, there's a lot of work done on it as you go back. We would expect the request that you approved rezoning. We are, we are in agreement with the conditions and see if we can, and I think they're trying to address the access that the city was concerned about with regard to maintenance, and the paving of asphalt would be certainly acceptable to the petitioner.
Any questions from Mr. Will Hoyt?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Hoyt. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak regarding Hearing none, I'll ask the council for their thoughts and deliberation.
Mr. Mayor Protem, based on the consistency statement that is provided by the planning board with the turnaround easement and the other consistency statement provided by staff and the planning board, I move we approve this request, subject to the conditions proposed by staff and amenable to the applicant.
Motion for Mr. Bale to have a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Burks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Well, we'll work on the turnaround and some ownership and some width. Now, you've got some more chores, but I think we'll get there.
I would like to enter, I looked at that property back in the eighties, not the by, but as for the previous owner. And he was, his understanding, or he said that was his road. That's what he was told me, and he said that road would go on and everything like that. And now, I'm not sure what all the, I'm going on thirty-five, forty years of memory, but I do remember specifically the owner at that time said that that was his road. And so, I mean, that's just a tidbit that I thought I'd throw out. It means absolutely nothing to the law, the lawyers and everything.
You're tossing out the adverse possession.
Yeah.
Okay. Just checking.
Well, we're gonna argue it's been consistently used ever since, and never blocked. But, well, I'm sure there's some recognition somewhere. Now, between you and Krista, find it. All right. Well, thank you very much for that, and we'll look forward to seeing a project there soon, I hope. Okay, now we're to the quasi-judicial hearing case, issue P twenty-five-oh-two, for signs and billboards. Mr. Evans?
Sir, so, I will distribute the site plans, and this also would be the time for anyone wishing to offer testimony to be placed on the road.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, it's okay, anyone wishing to be sworn in, if they've come here close to the clerk, we can.
If anyone that's planning to testify, if you would, join the city clerk and be sworn in or affirmed.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. So, this request is a special use permit for a billboard located at two-thousand, excuse me, twenty-one-twelve South Apple Street. And, the applicant in this case is Tele Billboards LLC. The property is zoned I-two general industrial, and there's one parcel identification number that's part of the request. The property is about fourteen-hundredths of an acre. The existing land use is a multi-use commercial development on the property, and the existing and principal use, as I mentioned, is commercial development with multiple uses and or structures. The proposed design of the billboard is a monopole design. It is a V-shaped billboard, as you'll see on the site plan. The height is proposed at thirty-five feet above grade. The dimensions are twelve by twenty-four. There is a possibility noted on the application for a digital LED display, but only on one side. This would be facing. This would be facing, uh, as, uh, as you're looking northbound. You'll kind of see what that looks like on the photos as we go through the presentation. In terms of road classification, South Fayetteville Street is a state-maintained, uh, major thoroughfare. And also, billboards are subject to review and approval by NC DOT. So, if the council grants the special use permit, the applicant also will have to, um, make an application to DOT's, um, billboard permitting process. So, there are certain locational requirements in the ordinance. Those include having a thousand feet of, um, frontage in an industrial district, um, for where the billboard's located, having a separation of a thousand feet from other billboards, and, um, having a, uh, distance of at least a hundred feet from a residential zoning district. And, and all three of those, uh, criteria have been, have been met. There are, um, general lighting requirements of the Ashboro zoning ordinance that the billboard would be subject to. Also, some conditions, uh, that you'll see specifically to the, uh, the light intensity. There are three halyryholy shrubs that are, uh, proposed around the base of the, uh, the billboard. That is a requirement of the zoning ordinance, that there be some sort of landscaping around the base. The immediate area consists primarily of commercial and institutional uses. There are also even some, uh, residential uses that are, uh, non-conforming. But, um, the I-two zoning would also permit industrial uses, um, on this property. The property is inside the city limits also. And, uh, any other sign permits would be looked at, um, separately from the billboard, um, permitting. We do have one, uh, land development plan policy that just in general speaks to signs, and that is that the city will require signs that blend harmoniously with the surrounding streetscape and other architectural elements of the site, uh, such as requiring monument-style signs that match building architecture, landscaping around signs, and unified sign, sign plans for large-scale development. So, um, the, uh, so here's the, showing you the subject property that's along South Fayetteville Street. It is just to the south of Springwood Road. The purple areas are industrially zoned, um, including the kind of lighter-colored purple, um, area on the, um, the southwestern side of the property. Commercial areas on the opposite side of South Fayetteville, in the red. The rezoning map shows you a closer view of the property. This is parcel A. And the topography is significantly, uh, flat here at this location, so no real topography issues. There are city, uh, utilities in the area as well. The aerial map shows you, uh, the, um, the, the subject property. And this oblique map shows you a little bit more of a two-dimensional view. These are approximate property line locations, just to kind of give you an idea, um, of where this is proposed. So, if you're looking at the property, um, just kind of directly in front, um, of, um, the parcel, the billboard would be going on the south side of the building, about in the location that I have where the, the arrow is. So, this is, uh, if you were looking, um, at the property, looking south on, uh, two-twenty business. So, this would be the non-LED, uh, display side. Uh, it, it would be just beyond the building, uh, location. This is if you were looking northbound, so this would be the side where the, um, uh, potential digital, uh, display would be, um, located. Then this is looking south as you're going away from the property. So, the site plan, you kind of see the overall property. And just to zoom in here, um, the billboard does make a V shape. You see a couple of bollards, um, just in the front of the billboard, the, the monopole design. And, um, the, um, also, so the, you see the distance from the residential property over a hundred feet, distance from the right-of-way, so, um, the structural design of the billboard here is a rendering of that. It is thirty-five feet, um, above grade, the dimensions are twelve by twenty-four. And you kind of see what an overhead view of the billboard would, would look like as well. So, we, we do have the list of requirements that are in the ordinance. I'll be glad to cover any of the, uh, any of these in detail if the council has questions. But I will say that, uh, the, um, the staff has reviewed the, the site plan and elevation against these, um, requirements, and does believe that they are met. And we do have four conditions that are proposed for the, uh, for the proposed, uh, use. The first is that, um, the billboard, um, which is technically called a sign, off-premises billboard and poster panel, uh, would be the approved use along with any other, uh, use permitted by law in the I-two. Of course, subject to zoning and other, uh, regulatory requirements. And also that, um, section five oh five nineteen were the billboard, the, the list of billboard requirements. The second condition deals with, um, the items that would be needed if council grants a special use permit. Those include, uh, the, um, required NC DOT permitting, um, that I mentioned. Also, uh, the final decision document, if council approves this, uh, special use. That would have to be obtained prior to the zoning permitting being approved. We do have items C and D that deal with the, the electronic changeable copy. The first is that there be, um, a, a, a minimum of a five-second delay. That's for a safety reason, so you don't have the flashing sort of messages, um, that would be a traffic, uh, hazard. And then item D deals with the brightness. This is consistent, um, with, with the same, uh, standard that we would have for any other, uh, digital display. And that is maximum of five thousand nits during the day, five hundred nits between dusk and dawn, um, measured from the sign face. So, um, so I will pause at this point, um, as we have the findings of fact that the applicant will need to speak to. But at this time, I will be glad to answer any questions.
John?
Yes.
John, with, with regard to the off-premise sign structure occurring every one thousand linear feet, the other billboard signage that we recently approved, is it, am I remembering correctly, it's like two thousand feet away from the spot, or where, where is it in that area?
Right. So, it, it is well over a thousand feet. I think it's in the seventeen thirty South Fayetteville Street. So, it's, it's well over a thousand feet.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you show the setback?
Yes, sir.
About twenty-four point two from the, from the right-of-way line or the property line.
Yes, sir.
How far is that from the pavement, though? Do you know how much area that, of the right-of-way is not paved? You see what I'm coming out?
I believe so. Let me, uh, if I could go back to the photo, maybe that will.
I, I know it'd be.
There you go. The, the edge of the sign was even with the edge of the building.
Yeah.
There's about twenty-four foot, yeah.
I can go back to this too, so that kind of shows you, like, from that, looking into it.
I'd say approximately forty feet.
Right, right.
Sure, an additional sixteen, fifteen, sixteen.
To the, to, yeah, to the yellow line.
Yeah.
What it looks like.
Yeah.
Back up that prior picture, you probably get a good. Well, yeah, that other one probably better.
This one, right? Maybe, uh...
One of them goes eighty inches wide. That's as wide as you're allowed to make.
It didn't protrude any further than the building, so.
Yeah. I was just wondering how far it was off the, the actual pavement on the, uh, South Fayetteville Street, that's it.
Move too much farther, you're getting the power lines.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Mr. Evans? Hearing none, I'll call on if there's anyone here to represent the, uh, the applicant, uh, of this project.
Thank you so much. I've got some paper I'm gonna bring up here.
Now, if they've been sworn in, do they need to sign any?
It's taken care of.
Good afternoon. My name is Timberly Sutherland. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild. Our business location is three oh one Hillsborough Street in Raleigh, North Carolina. Um, I'm here today on behalf of Tele Billboards for their application, uh, for a special use permit for the billboard. Um, I don't want to belabor, uh, Mr. Evans' points, um, and, and we go through the, the description of the billboard, but I'll do a brief overview. Um, I'm also joined today by Ms., uh, Molly Chisholm. She's gonna talk a little bit more, um, about the market impact analysis that was conducted for the proposed use. So, just to give an, a brief overview of the applicant, Tele Billboards. I know that you guys had a, um, a prior application a couple of months ago. But they are a local business operating here in Ashboro. They provide advertising, um, for other local businesses here in Ashboro. And, and their president, Mr. Tom Schneider, he has a long history of successful local business here, um, in the local community. So, just an overview of the request. What's being proposed is a monopole billboard. It is gonna have a twelve-by-twenty-four-foot double-face, um, along the twenty-one twelve, um, South Fayetteville Street. What's being proposed is the static vinyl siding on both sides, but have an opportunity for future, future digital, um, display on the northbound side. And that's just a, a good business, since the area's growing. There is gonna be more development in the area, and so there's gonna be more advertising needs. The zoning ordinance, um, already contemplates kind of the oversaturation of billboards and signs. Um, and so this will allow, um, future advertisement for, for businesses in the area and not kind of continue to, to, uh, run into these regulations due to density, um, and oversaturation concerns. So, here is a better view of the property. Again, it's at twenty-one twelve South Fayetteville Street. It is currently zoned I-two, in the I-two district, um, which is characterized by industrial use. And it's surrounded by commercial, um, property to the north, um, south, and east. There are residential properties right across the, um, railroad tracks there on the west side. But those are more than, um, a hundred feet away, which is compliant with the, the current zoning ordinance. Here is a better view of, of kind of that location. I know Mr. Evans had, he had some better pictures than I do, um, kind of demonstrating where the location of the, the billboard is proposed. And so, kind of, to get into the request, this, um, this application was required because this is considered an off-premises sign. So, this will be used to advertise local businesses that are not, um, currently, um, on the subject property. There are four applicable, um, special use permit standards that the applicant will have to demonstrate, um, to, to receive a special use permit. Um, and I will do a brief overview of those, uh, standards now. Before I do that, I do have... Sorry, I'm gonna pass up, um, the applicant's, uh, special use justification statement, which will kind of go through all those standards. There are fifteen additional standards required under the zoning ordinance that get kind of lengthy. So, instead of me going through and reading off each one of those, I'll pass those out.
Chief, while we're assembling here, the photograph that showed the skills place, was that one of the ones that we were investigating? Did you happen to see that?
No, I, I didn't see it. I was reading my presentation.
Apologies.
For being, I'm sorry, I'm, from my understanding from our blackest attitude, they actually shut down with that thirteen, we have here.
Excellent. Thanks, sir.
So, will the sign say winner winner?
So, the justification statement that I, I just, uh, handed out, we'll go through each four of these standards and also address, um, the fifteen additional conditions that are, um, required under zoning ordinance, section five oh nine, uh, subsection nineteen. So, the first of the standards is that the proposed use will not materially endanger the public health and safety. The structure will be engineered and installed in compliance with all local and state, um, building codes and safety regulations. Um, and that's just to ensure the, the structural integrity. In addition to that, there have been proper setbacks put in place and clearances as required under the zoning ordinance. That is just to en- ensure that there's no obstruction to, um, motor's visibility, um, and address all of those concerns. In addition, um, I think Mr. Evans touched on this point. The, uh, billboard will also have to go through review and approval through NC DOT, who has, NC DOT, which has its own set of standards and requirements to ensure public safety. So, here is a little bit of a more detailed view of the site plan. The second requirement under the standards is that the proposed use meet all the required conditions and specifications under the zoning ordinance. Like I said, there are, um, more than fifteen conditions, um, in addition to the four standards. Um, I've provided a, a justification statement for each of those standards, um, and would be more than happy to go through any of those that, um, if there's an interest. In addition to those, um, conditions and standards, the, the staff has provided testimony, and in their staff report have agreed that all of those conditions and standards have been satisfied based on the site plan. Here are some additional, um, just images of other telebillboard signs that you're probably familiar with in the area. They have been operating, uh, in the area, and they actually have another digital display right across from, um, Pinewood, um, I think it's the Pinewood Golf Course, um, Country Club. And that, that digital display has approximately seven local businesses that are advertised on a rotating basis. And that would be kind of the same idea in the future, once there's enough interest and, and capacity for, um, there to be a rotating basis of local businesses, uh, that would be added at the time. So, the third, um, standard required under the special use permit is that the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of abutting or adjoining properties. And I will have Ms. Chisholm come up in just a second, um, to testify as to her, um, market impact analysis. And I've got a copy of that, that I will be able to provide. So, Ms. Chisholm will come up? Yep. I can hand them out. I will have, uh, Ms. Chisholm come up and, and give her professional education background to the board, and then I would request that the board qualify her as an expert.
Hello. My name is Molly Chisholm. I'm a real estate appraiser with Hilton Crowder and Associates in High Point. I have worked there as an appraiser for thirty-two years. And, um, prior to that, I graduated from the University of North Carolina. And, um, I'm here tonight, of course, to testify to the impact of this potential, um, development on, um, surrounding properties. And the way I arrive at an, um, opinion on that is to find other properties that have sold that are in proximity to either a billboard or two of the, um, sales that I used. One was adjacent to a McDonald's restaurant in Greensboro, and another one was adjacent to a water tower, um, in High Point. So, similar types of external obsolescence. And, uh, compare those to properties who, that do not have that external entity to affect their, uh, sale price, and arrived at the opinion that it would not injure, um, property values of surrounding, the surrounding area. And I would be happy to answer any questions. I'm trying to give you a brief brevity is probably appreciated.
Having consumed these many pages, and there's the assumption you would not have presented it to us, and it drew a different conclusion.
I would ask, I mean, it looked like the comp sites, they're all, they're, are lower in height.
Um, the one in, um, Archdale, I believe it was high.
Okay.
The one in Town in High Point was lower. It was on a, more of a city street than, than South Fayetteville.
I'm looking at the one in Archdale. We're talking about something that's significantly higher here, aren't we? I mean, it's thirty-five feet versus, I mean, I'm, I guess that's fifteen, fifteen maybe to the top.
Yes.
Okay. Is that to get up over the building, is that?
Of course, the water tower is.
Right.
Much, and, and, um, you know, McDonald's restaurant would be light all, all night long, or, you know. So, I felt like it was comfortable.
And, and, just to say, I think, I think the, the height, um, it's the maximum height we're, um, allowed under the zoning ordinance, and that's... under the zoning ordinance, and that's what's been previously approved. So I think it's just consistent with with the development along South Fayetteville. So here are some other images right along South Fayetteville, right here in front of South End Market. And you can see that there has been a, there's a consistent existing use of signage along South Fayetteville, and the current land use plan, you know, contemplates this. And so for the last, for the last requirement under the special use permit standards is that the proposed use remains in harmony with the general area and general conformity with the land use plan. As you can see from South Fayetteville, this is in general harmony with the area. There is current existing signage along South Fayetteville Street. It's a major commercial corridor here in Ashboro, and this is consistent with that. In addition to that, this area is designated in the future land use plan as a commercial area, is to remain a commercial area, and so the existence and continuation of that signage is expected and contemplated. And so just in summary, I just wanted to go through and state that the proposed use does not materially endanger the public health and safety of the general public and that the proposed use meets all the required conditions and specification as testified and agreed upon by staff. And the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of the adjoining properties and abutting properties. Ms. Chisholm's market impact analysis kind of goes through that and and states that there will be no negative property value impacts. And then lastly, that this proposed use is in harmony with the area and in general conformity with the land use plan for Ashboro. Again, this is a major commercial corridor. This is kind of expected and contemplated, and I think that what they have proposed is a future for digital on the northbound side is a very good use of the space and a good use of of the commercial area. So and as a last point, I know the applicant has agreed to the proposed conditions, and I've called on that this is. And so the applicant is in agreement with the proposed conditions by staff. And in addition to that, the applicant has made me aware that NC DOT standards are actually at, they have a stricter standard than the conditions proposed by staff. So I think one of the staff standards, I think it's standard C, requires that there be a five second delay. NC DOT standards is that it's an eight second delay. And then that. And then the 5,000 nits. I have a statement from the electronic sign manufacturer that states that 5,000 nits is possible and available for them to be able to produce. If you all would like to see that. And me and my team are here if you guys have any additional questions for us.
I understand it's just vinyl for now on both sides, and the electronic will only be coming northbound.
Absolutely.
So that the north, the southbound will remain vinyl.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Again, I remain in admiration of your courage and creativity in attacking the public necessity portion of item three.
Well, La Deidre was here last time, and La Deidre's trained me, so she, she's got it covered.
I'll cut it out and taped it on my wall. I'm going to use it sometime. I don't know where, but I'm going to try.
So at this time, we would request that the council approve the applicant's SVP permit and with the proposed conditions.
Any further questions?
Thank you for all the information.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to provide testimony on this case? Hearing none, I assume none. Trevor, I suppose we're ready to contemplate the matter?
May I interrupt just before?
You certainly can.
I just want to make sure that the materials that we provided in our testimony was moved into the record.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem, without objection, is noted as being accepted into the record.
Thank you.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think having met the four part test, I move we approve the special use permit.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
With the, with the.
With the conditions. Dead or amenable?
Dead or amenable to the applicant.
Second, Mr. Burke. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving along into item eight, we'll proceed along to the exciting and entertaining world of finance. Ms. Reeves?
Mayor Protem, tell us the sitting picture. In your packets are a few ordinances that I would like consideration on tonight. The first one is the ordinance to amend the general fund, and I'm asking some additional funding to allocate for insurance, health insurance. When we pass a budget, we are hopeful, and we look at our past claims, and we're hopeful that our other coming up claims are not significant, but in this year, we did not fund enough in order to cover the claims. And so this is an allocation, an estimate of what is needed to get us through the end of June before the new budget starts. If there are no questions, I recommend adoption by reference.
Questions, discussion, if anyone? Not, will entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve this ordinance to amend the general fund to allocate additional funding for health insurance by reference.
Motion, Ms. Heath, second. Second, Mr. Bale. All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Ms. Reeves?
The next is an ordinance to amend the water insurance fund for the same reason. I recommend adoption by reference.
We have a motion, a recommendation for adoption. Do we have any additional discussion? Not will entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move we adopt the ordinance to amend the water insurance fund by reference.
Bale has a motion to have a second. Second, Mr. Burke. All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. Ms. Reeves?
The third one is an ordinance to amend the general fund. There have been some changes in expenditures in comparison to the current fiscal year, adopted budget, and I recommend adoption by reference. I will before I say that this does involve a fund balance allocation. Can't talk tonight. These are typical for me to do at the end of the fiscal year as removing money around in order to cover year-end expenditures. In June, we'll be doing an additional one that will probably be moving some more money around. This was needed to cover some timely expenditures or adoption by reference.
A recommendation for adoption by Ms. Reeves. Are there any questions or further discussion? Will entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve this ordinance to amend the general fund to allocate funding for operational expenses as presented.
Motion by Ms. Heath, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Trogdon. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That moves to Mr. Michael Leonard with exciting annexation.
Good evening. This item was presented, this is for the annexation of the Keeling property. It's actually two properties containing 0.722 acres and 0.226 acres on Uare Street. It was presented at the April 10th City Council meeting. Resolution has been property advertised, and now's the time for the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing at this time and entertain any testimony there for them?
Thank you. We have annexation ordinance prepared by the city attorney in your packets, and annexation, with the annexation being effective upon adoption, and staff recommends adoption by reference.
We have a recommendation to adopt by reference. Is there any further testimony, any inquiry, Mr. Leonard? Hearing none, will entertain a motion?
I move we adopt the ordinance to extend the corporate city limits of Ashboro by reference.
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Bale, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Heath. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you. You have in your packets the annual report for the Ashboro Airport Authority. This is approved by the Ashboro Airport Authority at their regular meeting on April 15th, 2025. Over the course of the year, the airport authority has completed the following. This includes regular meetings were held on July 16th, 2024, October 18th, 2024, January 21st, 2025, and April 15th, 2025. Special meetings were also held on July 20th, 2025, and November 27th, 2025. The authority reviewed and discussed quarterly safety committee meetings. They reviewed and discussed the status of FBO operations, the status of museum operations and activities. They reviewed and discussed the plans for the new terminal building and construction of a 10-unit teehanger and reviewed and discussed a new, new hangar for the North Carolina Aviation Museum. During the regular meetings on, their regular meeting on April 15th, 2025, the airport authority reviewed and approved the annual report for presentation to council. On 20, in 2024, the FBO Cardinal Air sold 35,037 gallons of avgas and 25,875 gallons of JDA fuel, and all hangars are currently full.
That is encouraging news that all the hangars are full. Any questions about the annual, Ashboro Airport Annual Report? I believe that requires an action on our part, but thank you for your presentation. Item B.
Item B, this is a consideration to pursue a grant from the FAA ATP Airport Terminal Project funding for up to $2 million. In May of 2024, or May of last year, you'll remember council instructed staff to pursue a letter of support from the NC Division of Aviation for support, as supporting documentation to this application for the $2 million grant from the FAA for the new terminal project. At that time, Ashboro Regional was only one of a couple airports in the state that NC DOT was willing to write this letter for. You have in your packets a copy of this letter of support dated July 2024 and including a match, an additional match from the NC DOT Division of Aviation in the amount of $1,125,000. Unfortunately, last year, we were not awarded the $2 million in ATP funds, and we did not, we assumed because we did not have a shovel-ready set of plans. In September of 2024, council approved work authorization number three between the City of Ashboro and W.K. Dixon for the design and bid administration of the new terminal building, downsizing the project from its previous preliminary design with an estimated cost of 10.8 million to a building of approximately 6,000 to 7,000 square feet and an estimate, estimated cost of approximately 5.5 million. Over the past year, W.K. Dixon and their architect have been meeting with the Ashboro Airport Authority to redesign the proposed terminal building and intend to have set up plans for approval and bid by this summer in order to be meeting the next application deadline for ATP funding. Staff has informed, has been informed that this, this may be the last round of such funding for the $2 million, and the application will no longer be available after 2025. In the coming weeks, as we start discussing the 2025, 26 fiscal budget discussion, or this will be in discussion as well, and information, more additional information will be given to council, along with a layout and a proposed design for the new terminal building. At this time, staff is just seeking direction on whether to proceed for the FAA ATP funding.
I think it's noteworthy that we have insight to the NC DOT Department of Aviation funding. We think there might possibly be some other sources of funding available as well that city manager and myself have learned of. I think the $2 million is a tremendous progress towards that project, so I think it's something that we should, we should pursue, but now that's just, that's one opinion.
I certainly concur. Is the state letter, do we have to redo that, or is that?
No, sir. Yeah, carries forward.
I think we're well more better prepared now. Are you looking for a consensus or a?
So you don't have a particular document to be signed or approved, do you?
No, I'm just, yeah, I'm just looking for whether, whether we want to pursue this $2 million or not.
It's the general consensus of the council. That can be entered into.
Not all here that won't pursue free money.
I do have one question. Is it, do we know if there's a timeline on this funding?
As far as when it needs to be spent or?
Sometimes they put caps on those.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know they, they typically look for something that is shovel-ready, so it's something that can be sent pretty quickly down the line.
Well, it's a beautiful concept design. I think they've done a great job of paring down the expense, but also keeping something really attractive and with a practical size.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Good luck. Thank you. And I believe we have a technical item relative to hangar leases?
Yes, sir. Also, at their regular meeting on April 15th, 2025, the Ashboro Airport Authority discussed hangar lease agreements in order to allow subleasing of hangar space in private hangars. You have in your packets the language that was approved for recommendation to couns, to council from the airport authority. And I'll refer to Jeff, but I believe this is going to be two. We need, do we need to vote to approve or deny?
It's a matter of if the council accepts the recommendation, wants to modify the recommendation, or doesn't accept, that's entirely within your discretion. If you decide to accept as presented or to modify and proceed, we would need a vote tonight saying you want to proceed with either as is or modified, and that you're authorizing city staff to advertise. And the reason I say that is if you're wanting to make it applicable to existing leases, it wouldn't be an issue if you were just saying prospective leaders, not one under consideration. But if you're wanting to make it applicable to existing leases, certainly we can do it any way you choose to want to, but one's off, the slim suggestion I would make on that is, since it does have to be advertised each time, probably the most efficient way to handle that, if you want to move forward, is authorize advertising. The 30 days are taken care of on the advertising, and then it comes back in, and the advertising would consist of naming all the private lease holders that this would be applicable to, get that in the paper, and then it would come back before you. Because we need 30 days, it won't work out on the math to get it at the June meeting. It'd be at the regular July meeting. Then if you want to, you'd be a permission to modify upon request the lease agreements from the existing ones, and it would also specify that we would include that in any future leases.
Having followed, followed along with this for quite some time, and under the assurances that this is Department of Aviation and FAA acceptable in this language, I think the items of concern have been addressed actually extremely well in that it's short term in nature, that the FBO manager has oversight for the first 30 days, and then the exceeding 30 days, our concern was someone having an aircraft there enjoying the preferred rate of the way we handle our lease arrangements, but yet it might not be subject to registered property tax, which is a bit of an anomaly anyway because of when you list your taxes. I mean, theoretically, I guess, it's their six months, but you wouldn't vulnerable to property tax listing, but our intent is to, as part of our revenue for our consideration, to have the property tax revenue for city and accounting. And I think we cover some of those items, but if it exceeds 30 days, Ashboro Airport Ashboro Airport Authority has to approve the agreement, and I think they clearly have our best interest at heart. So I felt like a lot of language is discussed, and I think there's a good job been accomplished here to meet the desires and goals and get aircraft in some empty space, so.
How long are the typical leases for?
As far as what we're talking about right here, I mean, it could range from nightly, if there's a thunderstorm coming in, that there's a.
No, no, if they're going to sublease, how long is their lease?
Their original lease.
Their original lease.
The original lease, or most of them are all thirty-year leases, and I would say most of them have between ten and fifteen years left, depending on.
Okay.
And they have value. They are a sellable commodity.
There is a new one, B, coming along.
Yeah, the new one that we voted on a few months back, was it Dirksen?
Durerville.
Durerville. It's going to be a new thirty-year.
Okay, just curious.
You know, which brings on some curiosities about different things, but like I say, they are a tradable commodity that can be exchanged. So, and then at that time, you know, the city retained ownership of it and then rents it back to whomever, so.
The, do we need to have any provision that the sublease cannot interfere with the primary lease?
They don't have any rights that whoever's doing the subleasing, they can't have more than what that person entering that agreement has.
In the event we reach a term on the lease, and there's a sublease tenant in there, and just so there's no interference.
All the other provisions are going to take control, but the only thing this is modifying is the part about prohibiting subleasing.
At that juncture, the lease would be invalid because the leaser has no authority.
Right.
This person gains nothing more than what the original less seen had, so once their agreement expires.
Be unlawful for him to lease something longer than he had control of.
Correct.
Very well.
We're looking for consensus to put this on for Ashboro in July.
Actually, we'd request a vote on that to do two parts. One, if you're accepting the recommendation from the Airport Authority without modification, and two, correcting staff to advertise, to bring it back before you.
And that's two separate motions.
You can combine those particular motions.
I can use that as referenced, as stated by City Attorney.
Certainly, if someone wants to so-move what I just said, that will be fine, it'll be recorded.
So-move what he just said.
We have a so-move motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There we go. Very good. That's a lot of progress on something that, a lot of consternation, but I think we finally reached a very good logical conclusion. Okay, ready to hear about crime, safety, and protection?
Sir. Hello, good evening. How's everyone doing?
Good.
Wow. I'll have to, okay, thank you. I'll have to say, sorry I was late. We had the dodgeball game between the police department and the school system, so I'm very.
Who won?
Very glad to say that we actually won. We had to have some redemption because we got beaten kickball last year. But it was a win-win because nobody got hurt from outside.
Did you wear your Kevlar in the dodgeball?
Well, I actually told them I wasn't going to play, so using y'all as an excuse, I choose y'all as an excuse. Hey, I got to go to council, I don't want to get all the.
Any correlation between this and the increase in healthcare costs?
Healing, I just don't heal quite as well as I used to, so we kind of let that be some of the young guys at the office. So as far as tonight, I'm going to first present the twenty twenty four annual report. For us, I have eight PowerPoint slides that will cover numerous main points within the Ashboro Police Department's twenty twenty four annual report. If anyone has any questions that are not on the slides, please let me know. But the first slide is actually in your book, is on page five through seven. First, I'll cover the number of calls for service for twenty twenty four. The department answered initiated thirty-five thousand eighteen calls for service. Friday is the day where the most calls for service, and seven to eight P M is when officers traditionally answer the most calls for service. Since twenty twenty two, we have seen a twenty-five percent increase in our calls for service and our self-initiative activities there. So now, what I'm going to do, once I get done talking, I'm going to move on to the next one.
I hear that around a twenty-five percent increase.
Yes, sir, it's a twenty-five percent. Pretty much, so the reason why is that in twenty twenty two, whenever we stopped a car, they only did an actual radiolog, and that was causing us a lot of problems trying to go back and actually find how many traffic stops we did. And so what we did, we went into nine-one-one or went to them and told them, hey, can you start doing a call for service? So then that's easier for us to track. So that's pretty much the one of the reasons why we had that twenty-five percent increase. Next is on page eight. This slide shows the top ten calls for service answered by the officers with the police department, and the response times associated with each types of those calls. Preroute means the time it takes for nine-one-one to receive the call from the person that's actually calling the instant in, and then enter that required information into the computer. Once the officer's dispatch to travel time starts, the average response time for all of our calls was four minutes and fifty-five seconds. The department's number one call for service is alarm calls. We had two thousand eight hundred and sixteen of those alarm calls with a response time of three minutes and three seconds each one of those alarms. The officer spent the longest period on the larceny and theft call. They were generally on scene for about twenty-five minutes and nine seconds to actually address that. So that was some of the main points from there.
How many, how many alarm calls were valid?
Well, from our standpoint, we actually call our report when we clear it if there's no instance of anything going on being code thirteen, and there are a lot that are actually code thirteen. And especially tonight with the storms and the weather, there's no telling how many alarm calls we'll start to get tonight. So the vast majority of those being false alarms, those are. The next one. This is our Part One offenses. This is on page ten. Part One offenses are criminal homicide, forcible rape, robbery, aggravated assaults, burglary, larceny theft, motor vehicle thefts, and arson. Of the eight Part One offenses, the department saw decreases in several areas. However, we saw an increase in the following areas. From cars for motor vehicle thefts, that increased by fifteen percent. Our aggravated assaults increased by thirty percent, and our criminal homicides went from, we had zero the previous year, and we had two in twenty twenty four. Overall, the department has seen a decrease of thirty-seven percent in Part One offenses since two thousand twenty-two. We continue to work with our partnerships within the Project Safe Neighborhood Initiative and our community efforts to reduce crime within the City of Ashboro. Some, give you some reasons about the increases in the car thefts. The Texas had learned that many of the larcenies involved vehicles that were left unlocked, and several had the keys left inside the vehicle. Another issue that we had was that the department had numerous vehicle larcenies of certain types of cars. There for a while, the Hyundai's and the Kia's were easily stolen because these newer types of vehicles can use the cell phone app to actually unlock the car and to actually start the car. And what criminals did, they were able to access information on YouTube to find out how they could access the app. So to address that, both of these car manufacturers actually did software updates, and that kind of addressed those issues with those particular types of cars. But for us to be proactive, we conducted an informational campaign on Facebook about what was going on with that, and then also we started what's called a, actually, it stands for halt auto break-ins today. We call them habit cards. And so officers started passing those habit cards out at community watch meetings in areas where any incident had occurred to try to give information to the citizens in those particular areas about car break-ins and also the larceny of cars, so then they would kind of be aware. Also, and on that habit card, if you see it on Facebook, Byron puts it on Facebook, that's the number one thing they say on the habit card, locking car, because that was what we were seeing a lot of times where that vehicle was left unlocked from the cars being stolen, or from them just going, someone going by, seeing if it's unlocked, and then stealing any type of merchandise that might be inside the car. In regards to aggravated assaults, the department has attempted to address the increase by focusing more on gun violence and violent crimes. Officers collected one hundred twenty-three firearms in two thousand twenty-four, and that was up from eighty-eight in twenty-three, or twenty-two in eighty-nine and twenty-three. Additionally, our partnerships with alcohol, tobacco, firearms, and explosives has resulted in numerous federal convictions of individuals who were involved in violent crimes inside the City of Ashboro. Subjects, suspects were sentenced to incarcerations in federal prison, which ranged from thirty-six months to actually one hundred and eighty months. So those were some things that we were trying to do to try to address some of those issues. And the department will continue our efforts in reducing violent crime, is being our goal, as always our goal. As far as the two homicides we had last year, or in twenty twenty four, the North Ashboro Park shooting occurred on five-three, twenty twenty four, and it was cleared by arrest, and being pending in court, that particular case is pending in court right now. The sixty-four skill shooting, it occurred on eleven-eleven, twenty twenty four. Detective Williamson, just to give you an idea of what he's been doing on that particular case, he's completed seventeen search warrants which related to this case. These search warrants have been for Gmail accounts, Facebook accounts, cell phone accounts, and also for cell phones themselves. He's also completed two court orders for cell tower records and three ping and trace orders. State Bureau of Investigation is also assisted by sending in, or sending three admin information for the court records related to suspects in this case. He also arrested the driver of the getaway vehicle. That vehicle was stolen out of Pittsburgh. So they were able to obtain some information from that, and currently he does have two persons of interest identified, so he's trying to work to confirm their involvement. So he's been working pretty much nonstop since November, since this incident occurred, and we feel like that we're going to have a conclusion to that soon. So that's some of the information on our Part One offenses. The next slide's in page twelve. This slide shows the top ten arrest offenses made by officers. With failure to appear in court as being the number one offense officers arrest for, officers made two thousand eighty-seven total physical arrests in twenty twenty four. Additionally, officers charged drywall impaired one hundred and sixty-four times with Officer Bim leading the department with twenty-four drywall impaired arrests in twenty twenty four. So that's his, that's something. We've moved him to street crimes, so, but he's still even getting some drywall impaired in street crimes, so. The next is about traffic accidents. This will be on page twenty-six through twenty-nine in your book. The Ashboro Police Department responded to one thousand six hundred and forty-four traffic crashes with Dixie Drive, Fayette Street, Salisbury Street, I seventy-three, seventy-four, and NC Highway forty-nine accounted for fifty-nine percent of all the crashes reported to the Ashboro Police Department. Traffic crashes occur most often on Friday, between hours of four and five, and in an effort to decrease the number of crashes, officers conducted ten thousand four hundred and ninety-three traffic stops, and they issued five thousand three hundred and four traffic citations. The department also partnered with the Governor's Highway Safety Program initiatives like Click It or Ticket, Boozer Lose It, and Speed a Little Lose a Lot campaigns.
That's probably what precipitated the high crime at seven to eight, if I said about who wrecked the car.
Maybe.
I see a pattern.
As far as the next, this information is on page thirty-eight. Now, all these weights on here, all these numbers on here, those numbers are reporting grams. So in the chart, you can see the three-year comparison for narcotics seizures, the Viceroy College Unit, and the Street Crimes Unit, focused on individuals involved in narcotics trade, and those units account for majority of the seizures within the Ashboro Police Department. In regard to overdoses, the department's calls for service and deaths have decreased over the years. In twenty twenty-two, we had two hundred and forty-nine calls, one hundred and forty-nine reports, and we had fourteen individuals die from overdoses. In twenty-three, we had two hundred and forty-eight calls, one hundred and sixty-two reports, and we had ten individuals die. In twenty twenty-four, we had one hundred and eighty-three calls for service, seventy-two reports taken, and we had six individuals die from overdoses. Officers on the street are seeing a decrease in fentanyl and heroin incidents, which we believe is the reason for the decrease in the actual overdose incidence and then the deaths. However, they are also seeing an increase in the seizures of meth and also cocaine. With these narcotics, individuals are less likely to actually overdose, but the desire for any narcotics is routinely the driving force behind many of our property crimes, and our continued enforcement is being a priority for us. So that was the, that was one thing that we started looking at internally, is why over the years has our, why is the deaths associated with our overdoses, why are they going down? And from what Vice has informed us, that was what they believe was the reason why. But we were seeing more meth and more coke seizures and the heroin seizures. So that was kind of the, I know in previous years, that was always something the council wanted to know about the overdose, but we are starting to see a little bit of a decrease, but we are seeing an increase in the meth and coke.
Well, and Chief, it seems like in reading the law log, there's, I've seen an increase with traffic stops and you're finding stuff in the vehicles. Is that accurate?
Let's see, what, you know, what we tried to do, we wanted to be, we wanted to get a little bit more of an actual proactive approach, instead of a reactive approach. And the officers have done very good from a day shift to a night shift standpoint, is that going, and Clark will probably enjoy this, going beyond, beyond, beyond the citation. Because sometimes it's just easy to stop the car, ask for driver license and registration, and then just do whatever the citation you're going to do, and then just clear the call and go to the next. And we really tried to engrain in the officers, because we're a very young department, try to go beyond the citation. And beyond the citation, as you saw in the previous slides, our arrests have went up, our seizures have went up, and that is something that we're trying to do, because everything that involves incurs in the City of Ashboro, whether it's from narcotics to crime, most of the time it involves a car. And so if we could get more car stops, then we can possibly talk to some more people and then hopefully try to reduce some of the crime. The next slide is like the patrol officer's favorite people in the whole department. Patrol officers do not like taking dog calls, or animal patrol calls. That's on page thirty-four. The importance of our animal patrol officers cannot be overstated. They provide a valuable service to citizens of Ashboro. Like I said, patrol officers always want to know when the animal patrol officer is working, because they certainly, they enjoy it. Animal patrol officer responded to one thousand three hundred and nineteen calls for service. They picked up four hundred and ninety-one officers, I'm sorry, animals. And conducted over twelve hundred public contacts. They spent a majority of their time investigating nuisance complaints and animals running at large, and they checked on the welfare of animals seven hundred and eight times. So it's a, it's a, it's a unit within the, within the police department that definitely, as far as carrying their own weight, they definitely carry their own weight. There is any doubt about that.
And I would encourage them to be, my experience with them has been very positive in handling situations. People are usually upset.
Well, we've been very fortunate through the years. Our animal patrol officers have just been, we have hit, we hit a home run with just about everyone we've ever had.
And without actually just advocating more blanket citations, they are, they are err on the side of caution about giving those out, but I tell you, some people on that third visit, whatnot, go and give them one.
Well, it's gotten, you know, we didn't tell them before, hey, if you don't, if you got a criminal citation, call the officer by, and you know, as far as charging that, and then that can kind of take care of the issue or the problem that's actually going on, so. But no, they, first pulling their weight. They certainly pulled their weight. There's no doubt about that.
Absolutely, dude. They care for the animals.
We tried to subcontract that out a couple of years back.
That was awful.
This has worked exceedingly well. Glad we did it.
Well, I can always tell when things are going good, because my phone don't ring. So I hardly ever get a call about animal patrol. Last slide of God is just from about department training. That's on page nineteen. The Ashboro Police Department has always been committed to training. In two thousand twenty-four, officer trained fourteen thousand fifty-one point five hours. This is an average of one hundred and forty-six point two five hours for, per training, per officer. This is up from eleven-five-twenty-five in twenty-three and ten thousand two seventy-five in twenty-two. The department is focused on preparing its officers to advance within the department. All command staff members and four lieutenants have completed the Administrative Officer Management Program at North Carolina State University, which is a three-month advanced training in Raleigh, taught by professors from North Carolina State. Any essential aspect of any department is constantly evaluating the training that is offered to its officers. And we noticed we were lacking in mid-level supervisory training. So new for twenty twenty-four, we started sergeant and lieutenant leadership training. We partnered with Dr. Brad Stewart from Guilford College in Greensboro, and he provided four trainings, four training. We partnered with Dr. Brad Stewart uh from Guilford College in Greensboro, and he provided four trainings, uh, four training sessions, two for sergeants and for uh two for lieutenants. Each training lasted three days. One month before the training, all sergeants and lieutenants were given a book on leadership that was chosen by Dr. Stewart and also chosen by us, members of the command staff. Required to read the book, and then they had to be ready to discuss the information in the book during the class. First two sessions co- covered adaptive leadership, and the last two sessions covered team building. Research suggests that educated officers tend to make better decisions than non-educated officers. Uh, they are less likely to use force and be involved in civil liability complaints, and are more likely to take leadership roles uh wi- within the Ashboro Police Department. We are committed to training, and our desire is to complete more training in twenty twenty five than we did in twenty twenty four. And so uh that's, that's just a goal uh that we are, we're trying to improve training every year. Obviously, we have state mandated training that the state requires us to do, uh, but we want to do training on top of that uh to uh, you know, basically get people ready to take my spot, major Curry's spot whenever he retires. And so uh that's uh been, been a goal, that's, that's a goal for us. Now, that's my last slide, if there's anything in the book uh that you would like to talk about or discuss, I have no problems answering any questions that you may have.
Uh, I want to ask, and I ask this every year, uh, since we've had the social district, social districts, alcohol drinking on the street, has, is that, uh, is that a problem? Uh, have you noticed a uptick, any problems with that or anything like that?
No, we haven't seen an increase downtown uh from any cost of service associated with that. Uh, I do know as far as uh there is one establishment downtown that we do have some complaints about from time to time. And generally what we try to do on that, they uh generally post information on uh Facebook whenever they're going to have events. And so uh as far as having uh some funds in our overtime budget, and traditionally when those activities occur, I'll just have someone work downtown as far as paying, paying them overtime, then I'll pay them overtime. But uh to answer your question, no, we haven't seen a tremendous increase because of, because of social.
Have you seen like any DW, more DWIs around town during or after these uh, these, these offenses we have, or is it, I know, I know you probably don't.
I mean, I, I, I don't know if I could really speak and tell you about that right now, but I can tell you that uh what we do, ju- just to give you a little bit of an idea as far as internally, is that uh at the end of day shift and the end of night shift, sergeant lieutenant, they have to put out an email to the whole department to explain what went on on day shift. And then the guys on night shift do the exact same thing. And so they give you information about any problems or incidents that occurred. And uh then they also, if there's any incidents from a traffic stop standpoint where someone's been placed under arrest, and you know, I, I can tell you that I think most nights, I mean, there is somebody arrested for a drywall pair. And so, but you know, I, I can't say right now where that incident occurred, uh, but it, it does look like that, uh, you know, we, we have a lot of, we have young officers working night shift especially. And uh Byron just put on Facebook just a couple of weeks ago where they had three, I'm pretty sure it was three drywall pair arrested and one and whatnot. And so uh there's, there's some officers that can get more than one DWI once, uh, and so you know, that's, as far as being a little bit of a challenge, that's a little bit of a challenge uh to get two in one night, because you got to do the arrest, do the processing at the manager's office, and then get your paper done, and then come back out, and then between cost of service and this and that. But uh no, we, we do traditionally have about a drywall pair to rest every night.
But you can't uh, the social district types.
No, I would have to take a little bit of time, and I'd have to.
Okay, I just.
You know, the, really, the person that runs the police department, her name's Karen. And so, you know, tomorrow, I'd go into Karen, I'd say, hey, run my DWIs and tell me where they all happened at. So if that's some information you would like to know, I, I'd have no problem getting it.
Well, it's just good, I, it's good that apparently we haven't had an uptick of a lot of problems uptown with this drink, because on these events, there's a lot of heavy drinking, I've noticed uptown.
Well, yeah, as far, as far as having a lot of cost of service associated with we, we, we.
That's great, thank you.
Chief, we know you have amazing employees, and I understand that one employee just celebrated thirty five years with the department, do you want to talk about her?
She did, uh, as far as being uh Wilson, Jody Wilson, uh, she's our record specialist that works at the North District Station. And uh she pretty much so, uh, she knows everything that's going on in the police department. And one of the reasons why is because, you know, the North District State Station, if you haven't been there, South North on Fayette Street where the old Northgate was, and uh, you know, officers going there all the time to tell you, take a break. And whenever they go in there, uh, the person that's got their ear is uh Jody. So she pretty much so knows all the internal workings, if you want to know anything that's going on with the officers especially, you can just say, hey, 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 tell me what's going on with this. And so uh, but no, she's been, uh, she's an a- asset from that standpoint, and uh she enjoys the job up there. So uh we're going to, as long as she wants to stay, we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to keep her.
That's great.
Anything else for Chief Brown? Thank you so much for.
You're welcome.
What I consider to be a very successful year, a successful report, and keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
And, and we appreciate all, all your efforts.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Have one more, I got one more after this.
Oh, you do? The shooting range.
I got one more.
We're going to get the lead out of that dam.
What I'll do, I've, I've, I've got some stuff that, that I've, I've typed up, which will kind of cover several of these slides. My last item is the old police shooting range, which is there out on Old Exton Road. Uh, we've been taking steps to try to reopen the old range out there. On November the twelfth, twenty twenty four, the police department was inspected by the North Carolina Department of Labor. On this day, officers were utilizing the shooting range that ran off Community Colleges Emergency Service Training Center. Evaluators from NCDOL tested three officers uh who were shooting at the range. The testing results found that the officers were exposed to high levels of lead. After discussions from NCDOL, we are limiting the number of officers using the range at one time. With fewer officers being able to train and qualify, more time and additional days must be requested at the, at the training center. This is a challenge because approximately fifteen agencies utilize this facility. So in determining if opening the old police shooting range was possible, we spoke with the following city departments. We spoke with man- management, facilities, water resources, and also planning and zoning. One area that needed to be addressed was protecting the bank of Lake Bunch. After approval uh from Mr. Auburn, Hesco barriers were, were, were purchased for this purpose. Our operational plan for the range is only used by the Ashboro Police Department for authorized training. Uh, it wouldn't be o- o- open to the public, not open to any of the law enforcement agencies, just us. There's shooting before eight in the morning, there's shooting after eight at night. Utilize one day a month for open range training, utilize one day a month for SWAT training, utilize five days a month in May for spring farms, utilize five days in November for fall farms, utilize periodically for new employee qualifications, utilize periodically for department uh farms instructors for training, utilize periodically by officers for test firing uh guns for, for uh, for crimes, uh, because a lot of times for federal cases, we have to testify our gun before we can take that case federal, so we'd use it for test firing. And so if, if, if you, this is just a, this is an aerial picture of the range, being familiar, if uh, if you're not, not familiar with it. Uh, I did a little, little research about the range, uh, retired Assistant Chief Crutchfield, Robert Crutchfield. I went and found him, and he said that he doesn't remember when it was opened, but he came to work here in nineteen sixty seven, and they were shooting at it then. So the last time we shot at it, being in two thousand, that was in two thousand, and that was after uh RCC opened up. So uh we were trying to just come, come up with some ideas about how we can address uh some of the lead issues at RCC's range. And then also is that uh if we have to, traditionally, we shoot with about eighteen people. If we knock that down to eight people, it takes us a week to do uh qualification as the state requires. And so if we knock it down to eight, it could ta- it could take us two weeks or more to try to get the whole uh department qualified. And so uh trying to get with the schedule from RCC, so that's where we tried to come up with some ideas about, you know, could we potentially open up the old range? So uh talked to Mr. Auburn about that, and so he did approve for us to buy Hesco barriers. If, if you're not familiar with what Hesco barriers are, uh, they're used by law enforcement for ranges and are used by the actual military uh for uh, for ranges, and also to secure uh some of, some of their uh out, outpost and some of the other places they have. It's basically just a, a large square structure uh that far as filling up with sand, that you actually fill up with sand. So that would be used to actually protect the bank that goes to, to the lake, uh, where there wouldn't be any lead or rounds that would actually impact the bank. Uh, so uh those have already been pur- purchased, we were just uh, wanted to bring this uh id- item before y'all uh first. And so basically what our next steps were, if there's any questions from y'all, and uh as far as a uh, a, a consensus uh from the council, to im- implement the plan to reopen the range uh as it was presented tonight, and then the initial phase would be necessary for site improvements, and that would be, uh, I've already spoken with uh Jimmy Cagle and his crews can actually install the Hesco barrier. So then uh, then we will be able to use the range.
So would we inform the neighbors out there, and I know there's not any houses like right there, would we do some communication with the neighbors about what's going on so that they know and aren't concerned if they hear things? Because I'm assuming these barriers wouldn't muffle sound.
No, it doesn't muffle sound, but uh, yes, I mean, if, if there was some, if there was an information session there that we actually need to do, uh, or uh, we wouldn't have any problem. Um, Byron could al- always, as far as put it, on, on Facebook, he's put it on Facebook wherever we, we were planning on doing, doing training. Uh, there is a uh, for as Trevor, he actually pulled it up, and it's, it's o- over seven hundred feet uh from where the range is to where uh housing structures are at. And then being uh the whole area out there being uh surrounded by trees, uh, so, you know, I, I, I don't think, I mean, obviously there is uh sound that would be coming from the guns being shot, uh, but we wouldn't shoot anything before eight in the morning, and we wouldn't shoot anything after eight, eight and nine. The only, only time we would get close uh to uh probably seven o'clock is in fall firearms and being in the November, that, that's in November. Uh, training standard says that we have to shoot in a low light environment, so uh we don't have to shoot in total darkness, but it has to be a low light environment. So traditionally, we wake till the sun sets, and most time in November, that's around five, five o'clock. Uh, so uh it would probably be, it can be around six to, to six thirty would be, be the latest that any shooting would be done, and that would be uh traditionally when we do fall firearms.
Any further questions? Oh, well, this has consensus as opposed to uh, 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 motion, and that sort of thing is in. Any objections to pursuing this?
Makes sense.
Okay.
There you go, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Trevor's going to tell for running a red light or stop sign.
I'm getting out of the way.
Yes, real, real quickly, uh, council, uh, as we previously reported, uh, we have been looking at uh these three uh intersection, intersections for the last several months for uh potential conversion from signalized to always stops. Um, those are the Elm and Brewer, Elm and Worth, and Worth and Main uh intersections. We took this action, you may remember, as a result of the age of the uh signal equipment that's out there. Uh, we've been having increasing uh difficulty getting parts to continue maintaining uh the proper functioning. Um, and we're really at the point now, if we're going to maintain those signals, that we're going to, uh, we would need to upgrade all of that equipment. Um, any estimate to do each signal is about seventy, eighty thousand dollars to modernize those, and so that's why uh the staff, and I'll give credit to the uh, to the departments that have been involved in this, um, Public Works, Engineering, uh, Facilities, uh, we, you know, given the characteristics of these intersections and the, and the traffic volumes, uh, always stops, um, potentially could work, and that's why we have been evaluating that for uh, for the last several months. Um, fire and rescue, police have reported no incidents, um, or uptick in incidents resulting from these provisional conversions. Um, I'll say the public feedback has generally been very positive uh as we have uh been evaluating this. We did get some reports uh from some neighbors uh indicating uh some on-street parking that can impede visibility at times. That's, that's particularly at the uh Worth and uh Elm Street intersection. And so we have been kind of monitoring that, Public Works is prepared to um put down restricted parking areas near that intersection if, if we do uh have issues out there. Uh, but overall, the evaluation phase has gone well, um, and, and all, it's our recommendation that the council uh direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances uh that would permanently, permanently convert these intersections to uh, to always stops, uh, and that could be presented on consent at a future, uh, future meeting.
Trevor, the uh, the, the existing lights, they've been converted to flashing red.
Correct.
I- is it contemplated that they're just going to be removed entirely?
Yes, sir.
Because some people with flashing red, they don't understand it's four-way stop.
Yes, sir.
And they'll sit there and they'll, they'll stay and wait for the flashing red to turn.
Yeah, we, we felt it was important to, to. Felt it important to leave those up uh during this time period to draw some attention to the, to the change, right? Um, and uh, but, but yes, the plan would be to remove, remove all that, all that equipment.
Well, I, I commute that way every morning, my wife commutes two of those three, I commute the other two, or two of those other three, and it's very well received.
I agree. I don't have that frequency, but my travel through there, I thought, thought it sounded a little weird. Does that require a motion?
It's the consensus of the council, I'll proceed.
Anyone have any objection?
Uh-uh.
I'll go on, I'll reach one.
All three, unless there's a difference of opinion.
I'll have a different opinion.
Okay.
Uh, I, I feel that the uh South Elm and North Street should have a light. It, South Elm is a very, it's really, it's one of the big uh north-south streets in town. Also, we got a school right up the road there, uh, getting in and out of school. Also, you got, uh, I don't think we're thinking about pedestrians here, pedestrian is going to be one, pretty many pedestrians in this area, and they, they're going to have this traffic coming up four ways. How, who, how are they going to know when to cross? I, I just think that that intersection is too busy, not have a light, is my opinion.
Okay, um, I, I guess we're, we have a complete consensus on Brewer and Elm and Worth and Main. Uh, uh, that's uh, I'll, I'll take a vote on Worth and Elm. Uh, all in favor of the four-way stop, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor of re- leaving, keeping the stop light signalized intersection, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, if we have our decision by six to one. Okay, um, next item is uh upcoming items. Uh, unlike Mayor Smith, I will not read all these to you. If you see items on there that you think you want, uh, everybody get on, take a picture on the screen. We have, we do have a number of items, something for everybody, the Summer Concert Series, that's always a big item, is that? Kicks off our force with entertainers, that's always a lot of fun. Memorial, they'll be close, good for y'all, I will be too.
I will announce you do have a, an invite for another item.
Ah, the Toyota Reception, everybody got that present.
Please get a, get with us as soon as you can, uh, Joanne and myself, and we didn't know, we need to RSVP quickly how many people will be attending.
I sent mom back soon as I got it.
Okay, it is an invitation-only event, so if you'll let us know as soon as you can.
Um, and talk to us just a second about the budget workshop, I know there's a, or, or there's a just an assortment of conflicts on that, but you've got a advertised item you need to address at that time.
We need to open that meeting and convene uh for a hearing. Trevor has uh got us on the, a really good grant program with the CDBGCV. There has been funds that have been returned by other communities, and there is a very limited timeline. We have an opportunity to maybe uh receive another five million dollars in CDBGCV money, but it must be spent within a year's time. It must be projects that are ready to go, it's a very narrow window, there's a significant amount of contract administration that will have to happen as well. So we do need to have a public hearing for that event, it has been advertised, we'll open that up and close it just as part of the application process. We were, we were shocked to, to have been invited to apply. So that could be a huge win, fall for the city as far as our budget's concerned for some much-needed infrastructure projects. Um, so we're, fingers crossed, we may get none, we may get all, we may get one out of three or two out of three of the projects we're submitting.
So is it contemplated that would be the, uh, maybe the only item, and then we'll reschedule a budget workshop whenever everybody's available?
I think uh, you, if you have a quorum of us, so let us go ahead and present budget workshop to y'all and get comments back from those that are able to attend, because there are many conflicts that day that we did not plan on when this happened. In fact, we, we went first, and everybody else didn't care, so.
And then, and then it was contemplated to do it Thursday, and now this.
Now we have a conflict too on Thursday, so um my recommendation is we go through it, you'll have staff there for those of you that can attend, and then we'll brief everyone else afterwards and get, get back with everybody, so we get as much feedback as we can, because then we have an advertising deadline following the week in order to pass the budget in June, so. It'll be a.
Okay.
Just busy May.
Right, busy May. Right, busy May.
And then on the May twenty-seventh, May twenty-sixth is Memorial Day, uh, will be closed. But May twenty-seventh, I'd like to have another council briefing, if that date is okay with y'all. If not, let me know if you have other dates that we can do it. We already have a list of items we need to discuss. And then, um, June fifteenth to the twenty-first, I'll be taking vacation with the family, but we'll still be in the state, so if anybody needs me, I'll just be at the coast, so. And it's also overlaps with the, uh, managers' conference for the summer, so about three days of that's conference and three days of vacation.
I'll be out town the twenty-first through the thirty-first, but I'll catch you.
Yes.
Anything else anybody would like to bring to our attention before we go into our next session?
There, there was a, uh, reception for Mary Jennifer Cagle.
There's two.
Yeah.
Uh, one, the morning of the thirteenth, that has been, uh, invited here at, uh, the Med Center, uh, off of Sparrow Road. And then there's another one that was invitation-only for the fourteenth.
Right.
That was announced after we'd already scheduled.
Yeah. I just knew I got something.
It's eight-thirty Tuesday morning, the thirteenth.
Uh, if that's covered those items, um, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session, as that I move to go into closed session to discuss the business expansion location issue and to give city staff instructions about negotiable property acquisition contract items. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Burks. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming tonight. Enjoyed having you in the audience. Everyone but Kevin can leave. Report to the office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.